How are you doing, Eileen?
praying that my computer cooperates. Because it's been, I had a lot of trouble Wednesday night at the planning board meeting and just...
You have somebody as a co-host, just in case.
How are you doing, Steve?
I'm all right, Steve, how are you?
I'm doing okay. Looking forward to the spring weather, that's for sure.
Finally. Don't say that too soon, though. Don't say too loudly.
Yet another snowstorm?
It could happen. It's happened before.
So one of the applicants dropped off tonight's agenda, huh?
Yeah. Which one?
Well, I thought we had... Oh, am I wrong about that?
The press is on the second page.
Okay, no, I'm sorry. You sent an amended agenda, right?
Yeah, it had the moralizations on it, which I didn't do initially.
My mistake.
And I had to take the minutes off because I didn't have a chance to send them around.
Okay.
Craig is going to be late, so he's stuck in traffic. I said, "That's okay, right now, I only got two numbers here." Waiting for everybody to sign in.
Yeah, actually, we're kind of late, right?
Yeah. They want me to livestream this. Hi, Rob.
Hi, Rob. Hey.
Oh, boy. You see Amy, is that our Amy Lawrence? Is that you? If it is, can you raise your hand? Yay, okay. Perfect.
Hey, guys.
Hi, Amy.
Eileen, is there anyone who we are expecting to be absent?
Oh, wait a minute. This meeting Jessica was going to miss? Or... I know there was a meeting, we were going to carry an application till tonight, but... I think, um, I think Jessica is going to be absent today. I think. I seem to recall... We were going to put something on for tonight, but Jessica was not going to be here, and maybe Shondre? I should write these things down. I rely on my memory, because I've always had such a good memory, which as I'm getting older, I don't remember.
You're still doing great, so...
I forget to write it down, that's what, you know... Oh, my goodness. And like I say, Craig texted me, he's stuck in traffic. He said he should be on by 7:15. One, two, three, four. We can't do anything right now. Well, I guess we can, we have a quorum, right?
Yeah, we have a quorum.
We have a quorum, we're good. I don't know, there's Joe. Wait, um, Joe? Ashley? I think...
So do you want to do the memorizations?
We can, as long as we have at least one person who is eligible to vote.
Give me one second, because they want me to start the livestream when we start the meeting. Oh, wait, let me designate somebody to be co-hosts, so that if I somehow... Guess what, Mr. Simon, you are going to be the co-host. So that if I go down...
Eileen, I don't like the pressure, you know how I act under pressure.
What pressure?
I will try. I think you're right to the occasion. I hope so.
Fake it till you make it, that's what I always say.
Okay.
Live on YouTube.
Who's going to read the Open Public Meeting Act?
I will do that, give me one sec. Okay. This is not working. Forget it, we're not doing it, it's not working, so we're not live. Next time.
Have we ever been live?
This was the first time, because they showed me how to do it, otherwise it takes about two days for them to download this and upload it onto the system. But it requires a password, of which I do not have, so I'm not doing that. I will read the public notice. According to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, the advice that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board at town hall, and mailing to the officially designated newspapers a list of the meeting dates annually, indicating that this meeting would take place on Monday, March 21st, 2022 via Zoom webinar. Okay. Amy Lawrence? Here. Jodi Sharma?
Here.
Steve Togar?
Here.
Wolfgang Turturist?
Here.
I'll call you Rob Simon, since there's... Rob, Eric, you're both here.
Yes.
Let me just say...
Yes.
How you doing, Eileen?
praying that my computer cooperates. Because it's been, I had a lot of trouble Wednesday night at the, um, planning board meeting and just.
We have somebody as a co-host, just in case.
I'm all right, Steve, how are you?
I'm doing okay. Looking forward to the spring weather, that's for sure.
Finally. Don't say that too soon, though. Don't, don't, don't say too loudly.
Yet another snowstorm?
It could happen. It's happened before.
Sure enough. So one of the applicants dropped off tonight's agenda, huh?
Yeah. Which one?
Uh, well, I thought we had. Oh, am I wrong about that?
The press is on the second page.
Okay, no, I'm sorry. You sent an amended agenda, right? So.
Yeah, it had the memorializations on it, which I didn't.
My mistake.
And I had to take the minutes off because I didn't have a chance to send them around.
Okay.
Craig is gonna be late, so he's stuck in traffic.
Oh.
I said, that's okay, right now, I only got two numbers here. Waiting for everybody to sign in.
Yeah, actually, we're kind of late, right?
Yeah. They want me to livestream this. Hi, Rob.
Hey, Rob.
Hey.
Uh, you see an Amy, is that our Amy Lawrence? Is that you? If it is, can you raise your hand? Yay, okay. Perfect.
Hey, guys.
Eileen, is there anyone who we are expecting to be absent?
Um. Oh, wait a minute. Is this meeting Jessica was gonna miss? Or, um. I know there was a meeting, we were gonna carry an application till tonight, but. I think, um, I think Jessica's gonna be absent today. I think. I seem to recall. We were gonna put something on for tonight, but Jessica was not gonna be here, and maybe Shondre? I should write these things down. I rely on my memory, because I've always had such a good memory, which as I'm getting older, I don't remember.
You're still doing great, so.
I forget to write it down, that's what, you know? Oh, my goodness. And like I say, Craig texted me, he's stuck in traffic. He said he should be on by 7:15. One, two, three, four. We can't do anything right now. Well, I guess we can, we have a quorum, right?
Yeah, we have a quorum.
We have a quorum, we're good. I don't know, there's Joe, I think, um, Joe. Ashley. I would, I think.
So do you wanna do the memorializations?
We can, as long as we have at least one person who is eligible to vote.
Give me one second, because they want me to start the livestream. When we start the meeting. Oh, wait, let me, let me designate somebody to be co-host, so that if I somehow. Guess what, Mr. Simon, you are gonna be the co-host, so that if I go down.
Eileen, I, I don't like the pressure, you know how I act under pressure.
What pressure?
I will try. I think you're right to the occasion. I hope so.
Yeah, fake it till you make it, that's what I always say.
Okay.
Live on YouTube, um.
Who's gonna read the Open Public Meeting Act?
I will do that, give me one second. Okay, well, this is not working. Forget it, we're not doing it, it's not working, so, we're not live. Next time.
Have we ever been, have we ever been live?
This was the first time, because they showed me how to do it, otherwise it takes about two days for them to, um, download this and upload it onto the system, but. It requires a password, of which I do not have, so I'm not doing that. I will read the public notice. According to the section five of the Open Public Meetings Act, the advice that notice of this meeting was made by posting on the bulletin board at town hall. And mailing to the officially designated newspapers a list of the meeting dating, meeting dates annually. Indicating that this meeting would take place on Monday, March 21st, 2022 via Zoom webinar. Okay. Amy Lawrence?
Here.
Jodi Sharma?
Here.
Steve Togar?
Here.
Wolfgang Taturis?
Here.
I'll call you, Rob Simon, since there's, Rob, Eric, you're both here.
Yes.
Um, let me just say.
Yes.
Okay, so I don't have Joe here. Okay, um, I guess we could do the, um, we have what, five resolutions?
I think we have six.
Six.
Five or six. Do you want me to take the lead on that, Mr. Simon?
Sure, that'd be great.
All right, we'll start with calendar 3833-21, Zhao, 15 Meadowbrook Road. Eligible to vote on this are Amy, Jodi, Steve, Wolfgang.
I've reviewed it, move approval.
Second.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jodi Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taturis?
Yes.
The next application is calendar 3841-21, Chu Rider, at 9 South Mountain Road. Eligible are Jodi, Steve, and Wolfgang.
Move approval, calendar 3841-21.
Second.
Jodi Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taturis?
Yes.
Next is calendar 3844-21, Cho Lim, at 40 Holly Drive. Eligible are Amy Lawrence, Jodi Sharma, Steve Togar, Wolfgang Taturis.
Yeah, and move approval of the memorialization for calendar number 3844-21.
Second?
Second.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jodi Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taturis?
Yes.
Next is Reichman, calendar 3845-21, 29 Jefferson Avenue. Eligible are Amy, Jodi, Steve, and Wolfgang.
Move approval of calendar 3845-21.
Second.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jodi Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taturis?
Yes.
Next is calendar 3848-21. Badacharia, One Ridge Terrace. Eligible are Amy, Jodi, Jodi, Steve, and Wolfgang.
Uh, move to approve calendar 3848-21.
Second.
Second.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jodi Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taturis?
Yes.
Okay, real quick, I'm gonna bring Craig over, who I just see showed up. The last resolution is calendar 3849-21, Shahi, 97 O'Fut Terrace. Eligible are Amy, Jodi, Steve, Wolfgang, and Craig.
Sorry, I'm sorry, guys.
Hey, Craig. Move approval, calendar 3849-21.
A second.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jodi Sharma?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taturis?
Yes.
Craig Plittner?
Yes.
Okay, let me just say, um, Craig, is this the meeting Jessica was gonna miss?
Yes.
It is, and Shondre, right?
And Shondre, both were out this, this, uh, this meeting.
So I'm really just missing Ashley. And, um, Joe.
Hang on one second, Ashley, I'm surprised.
Yeah, unless.
But. There, I just entered a note. All right.
And I see a hand raised from Wendy Prashker, I don't know. Do you wanna take her question real quick before we start?
Yeah, that's fine. Did you do all the, you saw the memorializations to bang, all right? We did one so far, okay.
All right.
So Ashley's out, she said she sent a note.
Okay, thank you. Did you have a question, Miss Prashker? You're muted.
I was on the last page and you didn't mention us.
I didn't mention anybody.
No, no, you were going through the calendar and we were the last.
Over the resolutions, yeah. Over the resolutions, that's okay.
You're there.
You're there, okay, we'll pitch you that.
Okay. So move on to, uh, our next memorialization, calendar 384121, Cliff Chu, Catherine Ryder, 9 South Mountain Road. In Milburn, any corrections or questions on that one?
We did them all.
Sorry?
We did all the resolutions.
Oh, they're all done, awesome. So we're on the first application?
We are.
Great, cool. Calendar 385421, uh, Muckta Bahadia, 216 White Oak Ridge Road. The application location is 45 Pine Terrace East.
Let me just, I believe this is, um. Let me just see which, I think they are detectives.
Mr. Simon and Mr. Plittner, I want to mention that I do know Muktab Hadiya, the applicant, but that should not prohibit me for, from performing my duties as a board member.
Thank you. Tom Singer.
Okay, I'll put over Mr. Singer and his client, and is anybody else?
That's nice, I guess. Ms. Body, if you'd be so kind, just turn your camera on, please, and unmute yourself.
Hold on a second, sorry, hi. I'm just trying to change my virtual background, just hold on. Okay, hi.
Thank you.
Yes, well, good morning, whoever's testifying, just raise your right hands. Do you, do you swear from the testimony about to give us my zoom here and be the truth, whole truth, about the truth?
I do. We do.
State your names one at a time, please, direct spelling your names.
My, my name is Vikas Bhatia. V I K A S, second name Bhatia, B H A T I A.
I'm M U K T A, B H A T I A, Muktab Hadiya.
Thomas Singer. T H O M A S, S I N G E R.
All right, thank you very much, um. Uh, Mr. and Mrs. Body, the floor is yours.
I think, Tom.
Mr. Singer, you must, Mr. Singer, go first. Tommy, please call, give us your qualifications, if you're going to speak first, please.
Licensed architect since, uh, 1998, state of New Jersey. A licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey since 2011. Um, master's degree in architecture from the University of Pennsylvania. Uh, my license is current.
Thank you very much, please proceed.
Okay, can I share my screen?
Of course.
So I have a, a slide deck.
Um, Mr. Singer, has this been provided to Ms. Dabbit?
No, it hasn't.
So.
So this would be.
If you can just describe, just give us an overview of how many slides, uh, and whether you prepared this and when you prepared it.
Uh, I prepared this today, it's nine slides.
So we're gonna mark this as A1. Slide presentation. And do they include, uh, does the slides include photographs?
The slides do not include photographs, no. They're mostly from the drawings or related documents.
Okay, so we're gonna mark the entire slide presentation as A1, so as you go through the different slides, just identify what each one refers to, thank you.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Um, are they visible?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so this is, uh, 45 Pine Terrace East. Just for orientation, the New Jersey Transit rail lines run. Right here. I don't know if you can see the icon, but, uh, this is the bridge that runs underneath the train, tracks. And connects, you know, the hard, the, um, the middle school area, the Short Hills Road. And the properties vary in size considerably. This is 45, it, uh, it's towards the bottom of the trapezoid. Um, just for historical note, that was 2020, when all those were about the same size. And right now, and as we speak, they've, uh, pretty closely approximated the size of the lots they're sitting on. Except for this one and the bottom one, uh, they look kind of like nesting dolls for the. We're here for. Um, three variances. There's a portion of the house that's beyond the. The, um, side yard combined on both the right and the left. And then the left side, which is garage, has, uh, two other variances. One is for the initial setback and the other is for the height side yard setback. Uh, the proposal is to put a two-story addition on the back of the house, which is currently a cape, and to raise the main portion to be a full two stories. The house is conforming in all the, in terms of FAR and coverages, with the exception of those setbacks. The right setback is seven foot six, uh, which is six inches too short. The right setback is conforming, but. Because the left setback is, is, I mean, because the right setback is too narrow, we end up with a, a large. Setback for side yard combined. However, all the new. Um, construction to the back is conforming with those side, those combined side yard setbacks. It's just a small portion of the front and a portion of the garage, which I'll go through. Um. The addition. This side of the addition meets the side yard combined. This side of the addition meets the side yard combined. The garage is existing, and I'll explain why we're doing that in a second. The second floor. Um, portions of the existing house poke through, and everything else is within. Those combined side yards. Oh, sorry. Um, these are the, the, this is the extent of the variance. So the garage, it's a, a portion at the top of the garage towards the back. On the, uh, in the third bedroom, there's a closet that falls outside of the, the variance. Sort of falls outside of the, the envelope. This is. What we're looking for, um. A small portion up here, in order to rationalize. This shape and to compose the facade, and a portion on the garage side. Which looks something like that. The reason for that is because the garage is asymmetrical. The rake of the back gets very low and doesn't match the rake of anything else in the house. And when you get to the back of the garage, it's only about, it's less than four feet from the, from the garage floor to the ceiling. So there's a limited amount of, limited number of cars that can fit there. The, uh, height to side, I mean, the, um, these are the side yard combined setbacks. They don't change. Uh, from old to new. This piece is a, a little bit of additional mass. Um, because the, we're, we're keeping the living room in place, but above it. There's some space that falls outside of that. The side yard combined envelope. And the right side, it's just that little bit on the top. The height to side yard variance, the sloping line here. There's a one foot, this is 19 feet to the top of the garage peak. Um, so it, it falls one in, one foot into the height to side yard. Which is, means that, in addition to the. The six inch sidewide, uh, side yard setback, that's 10 inches, an additional four inches. Um, so the reason for. The variances, on the, in this case, we're trying to rationalize the shape of the, the garage roof. So that it, it, it looks pretty awkward at this point. Um, so by bringing this up, we both increased the size of the garage, we make it possible to put a car in there, which gets a car off the driveway. And, uh, and cleans, cleans the neighborhood up a bit. On this side, in order to get a reasonably clear form on the left. This closet sort of is getting in our way. So we're asking for that and this. Oops, apologize. Uh, the two sides you haven't seen yet, this is the. The, um, left side. There's a, this is the portion that we're, we're talking about for that, for the left sides variants. Uh, there is a break where the chimney comes up, so this, this portion of stone wall is set back. And without this, you'd, you'd have a continuous wall up to here. Uh, this is the extent of the garage. And again, here at the, here's the new addition that's. Lining up with the side yard combined. Uh, this portion is the old house that's existing. Um, and the garage, from this point, this line here up is new. So. Three dimensionally. We're looking at a mess of about that much space. Um. On the left side of the house, the garage, it's a little bit more, but. It's, it's that.
Is, is that a, a, Tom?
Yeah.
Is, is, was that, I, I couldn't see it that well, was that in cubic feet that you're measuring that?
I, for memorialization purposes, yeah, the, this, sorry. I didn't know how to describe it, other than. Quantitatively, that's 214 cubic feet, and that's 256 cubic feet.
Thank you.
So from a zoning standpoint. Um, you see, this is both a C1 and a C2 variance. C1. Because of the, the shape of the lot, but really mostly the existing building on it. If it was a new construction or a tear down, we'd be looking at, uh, being able to build 65% of the width. For the new building, um, because it's, it's an existing building and the garage is close to the property line. Um, and we take the worst case from both sides of the house, uh, that 65% is reduced to 58%. Um, but more importantly, having that garage attached essentially makes the other side of the house, the left side, non-conforming. In terms of C two. We are. Our mo-. The reasons for doing this is to make the house rational and fit. Um, nicely within the neighborhood. Um, there's not much. That the owner gains in terms of space or functionality at the uh. Because of this, but. The the sole purpose for this is to. Make it look good from the street. Um, so that's. Purpose I of zoning, which advances the purposes of zoning. And um. Because we're working hard to. To maintain the germ of the original house to. To keep it in context. Um, we're trying to keep as much of it as possible. Which. By definition reduces the amount of. Of waste going into the. The waste stream. Believe relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and will not impair the intent and. Uh, purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance because. This is a specific property with specific constraints. The C one aspects of this, the existing building. Don't exist. In precisely the same way anywhere else in town. So the. The actions of the border. Are limited to this particular site. And the entire purpose of the application. In order to gain these, these two pieces of. Two volumes. Is to improve the outward appearance of the house. And to protect the character of the established neighborhood. And try to make this look like it belongs. And that's. What we've got.
Okay, Mr. Singer, could you uh stop sharing your screen, please?
Sure.
And Mr. Singer, I would ask that you email your presentation that we've marked A one to Miss David. Irrespective of the outcome of the application, please.
Happy to.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mrs. Body or Mr. Singer, do you have any other comments you would like to make?
Um, no.
Okay. Uh, then I will open up this witness for questioning from the board. Uh, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Singer?
Yeah, I can, I can start. Uh, just a couple of quick questions, Mr. Singer, I just want to. Understand this for the record that none of these variances are preexisting nonconforming, is that correct, that they're all a result of a new construction?
Well. They are all preexisting. So the existing house does have. All the variants with the exception. Of the height to setback variance. Already in place. These are, these are addition, these are additional. There's additional volume. To those um. Nonconformities.
So the degree of the preexisting nonconforming is changing as a result of the construction. Okay, perfect. Um, could you provide uh some testimony as to? The impact of the uh construction on the neighbor to the left. The neighbor who is particularly, when facing the home, maybe to left, who's particularly close. Uh, to the uh, to the existing property.
The impact, well, there's a chimney that's there. Existing and that's gonna. That would stay there, so. The mass isn't really. Moving in that direction and. I think if this wasn't done, he'd have a. A pretty, a less. A less coherent, he, the view would be worse out as well.
Thank you.
He doesn't have any questions for Mr. Singer.
Just a question on my end here, on the left, on the right side. The variance, the setback variance above eighteen feet, that is new, correct?
That is new.
Okay, thank you.
It's one foot above the.
Space, right. Thank you.
Anything else? Then I will open up the floor for questions of Mr. Singer. Anyone in the uh audience had a question for Mr. Singer? Or the bodies? I see none. Um, anyone in the audience? Oh, I'm sorry, I just jumped up there. Um, Choi, oh, they're gone. Oh, brought them over, great. Could you please turn your camera and unmute yourself?
Yes, hello, hi, I'm Chai Boon, I'm one of the neighbors here and we were just discussing as a neighborhood, just to find out the height. I couldn't see it very clearly on the rendering, so just curious how it compares to some of us already on the street.
The height is just under thirty two feet. Which is.
How does that compare then to the ones along the street, just out of curiosity?
It's a good que- I don't ha- I haven't surveyed the other houses. But most of them are going up to the limit, which is thirty two. The new. The existing, the existing ones were. In the twenty, twenty six to twenty eight foot range.
Ah, I see. Okay, thank you.
The height does comply currently with the ordinance, so. It's not up, that's up, not up for debate tonight.
Okay, yeah, yeah, no, I think this was just an ask of the, thank you.
Any other questions from the audience for Mr. Singer or the bodies? Okay, I don't see any uh comments from the audience. Anyone in the attendee section have any comments they would like to make regarding this case? I don't see any. Uh, then we'll be closing the public portion of this case. Uh, I will open up to members of the board for comment.
Well, I'll go ahead and start it off. Um, no, in looking, you know, in in visiting the site. And you're looking at the drawings comparing, you know, what this reports to look like, you know, you know, compared to what's there and. Relative to what's around it, I think it's a really a great addition to the neighborhood personally, I think it's gonna. Uh, it's gonna be a much more attractive house. I don't think there's anything bulk wise that's concerning at all. Um, it is certainly is gonna be larger than what's there, but. Uh, like I said, any variances because of the existing boundaries of the house itself. And I think they've come up with a design which is quite reasonable, quite modest for. For the lot.
Thank you, Wolfgang. Any other comments, Amy? I'm sorry, Steve, look at you next.
Okay, I'll go. I I also find the request um fairly, you know, I I find it reasonable and and moderate as well, I I, you know, the. Uh, this is really exacerbated by the existing um. You know, setback and combined yard setback that are, you know, that already don't conform preexisting, so I I think what they've chosen to do. Um, is 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 very reasonable and and, you know, helps the aesthetics of the the building, given what's there now, so. No issue.
Thank you, Amy, Steve.
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo Wolfgang and Amy's comments, you know, it's. Not often we, we, you can compliment an applicant, but uh you you guys are doing a great job, it's uh, it's modest, it's. It's going to be very helpful for the streetscape. Um, and so I can, I can certainly support the application.
Thank you, Steve. Um, before we vote on this, Joe, I noticed your camera was off for most of the uh testimony. Are you prepared to vote on this or no? You're muted.
I don't think he was here for the whole thing, I didn't.
Okay, because I noticed camera came on at seven thirty two, so I just didn't.
I don't know if he heard the whole thing or not.
Okay, then.
I don't, I don't think he's eligible to.
Okay, then, then, yeah, Jerry will not be eligible to vote on this, so um, lastly, I too find this uh, this uh, application to be a reasonable request, so. I'd be in favor of it, so go ahead, go ahead, Eileen. Oh, sorry, does the motion to approve?
I'm, I move approval.
And a second?
Was that Amy or Jody?
Uh, I think it's Jody.
Amy Lawrence?
Yes.
Jody Shara?
Yes.
Dave Toger?
Yes.
Wolfgang Katures?
Yes.
Craig Platter?
Yes. Good luck with the project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we will be moving to calendar thirty eight fifty five twenty one, Jason Bauer, one sixty five Long Hill Drive. We have Tim on this one, too. Good evening, folks.
Hello.
Hi, hello.
It will uh swear everyone in real quick.
If everyone has time, raise your right hand, please. You swear from testimony about to give in tonight's hearing to be the truth, hold true, come by the truth?
I do.
Your names to the record, spell your names first one at a time.
Mia Bauer, M I A. B A U E R.
Jason Bauer, J A S O N. B A U E R.
Timothy Klessi. K L E S S C.
Thank you very much. Um. Mr. Mrs. Bauer, how would you like to proceed?
Um, sure, we'll start.
We'll introduce ourselves. Thank you very much for having us this evening. I'm Mia Bowers, Jason Bauer. Uh, we have two children, uh, twelve and fourteen. We've been uh living in Short Hills over a year now. Um, we bought a beautiful home and. Moved in. During the pandemic. Um, we are here this evening because. We're looking to make some changes to the home. Um, we did buy a beautiful home, but. It was a home that someone built for themselves and then decided to sell it. Um. You know, realizing what the market was and. So we're trying to now make it a little more our taste and our style. Um. But even more importantly, I have an eighty five, soon to be eighty six year old mother who. I'm moving in to live with us and. What is currently my office will become her bedroom and her living space and. In to that end, um, I'm looking to. Build an office space for myself to use now, since I'm working from home. Those are our two primary reasons for for being here this evening.
Okay, I can pick up from here.
Do so, please give me your qualifications, Sam.
Okay, I'm licensed, I'm licensed architect in the state of New Jersey and New York and been licensed for about thirty years. Uh, my license is presently in good standing. I've impaired in front of this board and. Many other boards throughout New York and New Jersey, um, you know, over the last. Thirty years. And I'd like you to accept my qualifications.
Are licensed in good standing?
Yes, yes.
Super, we'll accept them.
Okay, um. I'd like to just share my screen.
Sure.
Sharon, I'm on. Sharon, Sharon, I'm on. And then just first take into my B O A sheets. This is. One sixty five Long Hill Drive. Uh, these drawings are exactly the same as the drawings that. Were that all of you have. I designed it for a person in town that lived down in Glenwood. And I actually designed this house for them and um. I guess it was right before they were to move in, they got a little nervous because of COVID and decided not to. To move in and put the house on the market, okay, and so the Bowers then came in and bought the house from those people. It's really block thirty six oh six lot three, it's an R four zone. And the lot area itself is about twenty three thousand two hundred and sixty six square feet. Okay, well, I designed it as a colonial revival, it's a pretty house, I'm gonna say we designed it. Two thousand twenty, two and a half story colonial. Yeah, I I really should say colonial revival. If I come into. What we're actually proposing. To do tonight. It's the. My existing site plan. And. Trying to get it perfect here. You know, the property is a little bit of a. Pizza, a little bit, and it's also cocked a little bit on an angle. And it's also on a curve on Long Hill. If you continue down Long Hill a little bit, like two houses to the left, you hit White Oak Ridge, we're right at the end here. So. We have already installed this circular drive, the front, the driveway into the three car garage. And that's my existing building. Our proposal tonight is to add this. One story building on the left side to give us an office. I think it's actually helpful to the building itself because it would scale down my building. And stop me from having that. Sort of twenty two foot high sheer wall on the left side of the building. And then we're also proposing to add. A bedroom on the second floor in this area. This bedroom is twenty point eight off the property line and needs to be twenty two. In order to stop that. Second floor variance, you know. For a very small triangle, which I'll show you in better detail in just a second. What? I did is I located this addition on the left side, twelve and a half feet. And I did that so that I could still get. Fifteen feet. If you followed the picture plane of the building, I still have fifteen feet to the property line. And I left that because I think visually that's what's going on here. When you look at the front. Of this building, you see. The width across the front of the building is the way I carried that fifteen feet. The way that the site itself is parallax is really the reason why we're here tonight, because. I'm gonna say it's a new regularly shaped block. You know, if my lot could just. Continue straight. And I I wouldn't be here because we would be conforming. But the addition on the second floor is actually concealed in the back of the house, I'm gonna say not. Um, at all in the be, in the public view. These, these plantings, there's, you know, ten foot high. Green giants that were densely planted along this property line, and we did that, some of them were here and we also added them. In preparation for this hearing so that the board could see that, even if, and if you look to the left of here. It's the neighbor's driveway and the neighbor's garage is what's immediately to the left. I'm just gonna. Move on to my. Um, next sheet. So. What it, what I was able to do here. Is I, I have the primary building, right, it's really a colonial revival, it's a. Dining room and a living room and a nice entrance for you. We set back. And then we build our one story addition, really almost as a conservatory, so it has glass, looks like that old traditional. Screened in porch or that open porch that was on the side of these houses. And what I did is I took from the picture plane. And I held. That fifteen feet, it's really to that point, to the point of the. Um, property line, and these are the shrubbery that was added. If I continue on this. You can see the. Required first floor setback of fifteen. And the required second floor setback of twenty two. And if I come up here, it's that triangle. That we're seeking the variance for this evening. It's really because again of the. Um, kind of parallaxing of the building. I moved to my. Second floor plan. Right now I have a one story building on the first floor, we've done some other work to this building, like. We took off the peaked portico and replaced it with a flat roof. Added the flat roof here so that I could make this structure look as de minimis as possible. And then that's my very, or my variance request on the second floor. And what I'm saying is from there to there is really my fifteen feet. It's gonna. Move up to. It's gonna move up to the front elevation of the building. And we've just changed it a little. We flattened the roof here and took away the peaked roof and added that so that I could make this roof flat also. Because I wanted to make this building look as small as possible. This is my new structure. Then I added that little skirt roof and the the value of that skirt roof is that it actually lowers the gutter line, so it makes my building actually again look a little smaller. Okay, but that's my one story addition to get this office. Fine. It's really all I have on that sheet. I come to my rear elevation, and I know it's not so much of a concern for the application tonight, but the existing roof is right there where I have it dotted. And we've added this building to get that bedroom on the second floor. But really, it's concealed behind this building, which is in the foreground. And we dropped the gutter into this building so that the windows would be up into these little dormers. So I just to make this building look smaller, you can see how the gutter of the primary building has been raised up. And we've dropped our gutter about a foot and a half. I have one more sheet and I don't know. Oh, this is just the side elevation showing that proposed addition on the first floor. And then here are proposed addition on the second floor. And you can see I left the primary roof and then we come and we put a large cricket in so that we can separate. And then we added aesthetically this roof so that we could scale the building itself down. It's gonna take you, or I'd like to just show you a couple of thirty second videos. The first one
Hey, hey, Tim.
Yes.
Have have these been submitted to the board?
No, I'm sorry. Neither of these videos have been submitted.
What, I'm sorry?
Neither of them have. I have two of them.
Okay, so why don't we, first of all, identify them? We're gonna, you said there's two videos?
Yes, I have two videos and I called the one, let me get this. I called the one towards White Oak Ridge Road, and the other one is away from White Oak Ridge Road.
All right, well, we're gonna, we're gonna mark the as A one, the video towards White Oak Ridge Road.
Okay.
And and A two will be away from White Oak Ridge Road.
Okay.
And you're going to provide these to Eileen once we're done with the application?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't you proceed, starting with A one?
I I took these videos last Sunday morning. Okay, and I took them from my car because I like this idea of taking them from the car because I think that's how we see them. Of course, I moved along a little too quickly here. But the first house, this kind of brown house, is the house that's immediately to the right of the subject property. On the left here is the subject property. Now, what I'm trying to say here is that the road is actually curving, so the front yard appears to be much wider than it is. And that portico is the portico that we're turning into the flat roof. And you can start to see the trees that we planted, the green giants coming in on the left side. The original owner had planted, I think, six of them, and I think the Bowers added ten more, if I'm correct about that. Jason?
Yeah, we we actually added fifteen fourteen footers. The ones that were there were babies. We had those removed and then put in of fifteen green giants.
So now when I come, you can see what happens is that that diagonal piercing of the lot line, actually, I think, in a way makes looks a little bad on the property. And I think putting our building right in front of this will help to stop you seeing all of that depth as a sort of a fence would help to do it, right? If I could put a fence there, you would see the property line going straight across. So I think this addition is actually helpful to this building. And also, remember, breaks down the sheer mass of the two story element as we approach on the side, you know, little porch addition to. That next house really faces Long Hill Drive or White Oak Ridge Road, I'm sorry. I don't know why I can't. Now I'm just gonna come back the other way. You can see the shrubbery is pretty dense here.
Hey, Tim, Tim, how how far would you say the shrubbery is from to the neighbor's house?
Um, I would guess thirty feet. I would think their driveway is probably thirty feet.
Yeah.
I'll go back a little and see. Oops. I went a little too far. It's like the yeah, I I think that's probably twenty seven feet. I guess they got the same problem going on that the it's on a little bit of an angle. So it looks to me like it's thirty in the front and about twenty six in the back.
Got it. Thank you.
The planting is all on our property. None of it is on the neighbors.
Right.
This is where I'm trying to make this case that the one story addition is actually helpful to the building as kind of a classic, really colonial revival would have. This house was probably an alteration and not a new home because it looks to me like that side yard setback doesn't conform. But I think the one story mass is a little bit helpful in terms of scaling the building. And that's the case that I'm trying to make for our addition on the side. This is, well, I'm just gonna take us right into attachment D. This is the attachment D that's out of the actual application. It's the same. It's on your application. It's page ten. Okay, the the first floor setback is existing at nineteen point three. And the proposal is to bring it to seven point three three at that back corner. It's required to be fifteen, so the request is for seven point six three. At, you know, really, it's a diagonal line, which I'll take you back to the survey and show you again. The second floor is required to be a twenty two. We're at twenty point eight, so it's a request of that small triangle for one point two feet. And then the side combined is required. The side combined in this house is a little enlarged, just so everyone knows, because it has that wide front and the funnel back. So my combined is required to be forty two. It's existing at forty seven, and the proposal would bring it to thirty five point three. So that request is for six point seven feet. If I just come back to my I like my first floor plan better for this because I think it's it's really easy to see it. And you can see the property line in our trees. And if I could get into this a little, right here is the seven point three three. Whereas up here, it's, I could actually tell you what it is if I measure this dimension from here to the property line is thirteen feet. And that's what, but
Hey, Tim, for the record, when you when you're saying this dimension, you're talking about from the front corner of the proposed office construction to the closest lot line?
Yes. If I go perpendicular to the lot line, as side yard setbacks are actually calculated, it's thirteen feet. If I could go parallel to the face of the building, it's actually at fifteen feet, which is what's required. And this is really that one story building. And if we look at this back a little, you can see that this funnel that's occurring here is really being blocked by this building. I think actually the end, the building itself breaks down the two story mass of the existing structure. So I think the building is actually helpful. All of this conforms, you know, to building coverage. The so that's my really my deviation that we're seeking tonight. Gives me that small triangle there for the second floor. And it gives me, it's this area for the first floor. I guess seven. I don't know the number, let me see. Seven, this dimension right there is seven point six seven. And then it comes to the front where it looks to me it's about one foot nine inches or something. So that that is my entire presentation. I would just like to add that now the the topography of the or the lot lines of the site are the problem here. If I had a straight lot line, I wouldn't be here with you this evening. The but and I think it, the building itself is helped by the addition of the one story addition on the left side. It can scale and starts to give me a little design recall to the front portico as I get to the left and ties it together. All of the no trees are being removed as part of this. Remember, this building itself has a very wide front yard. So the perception, even as I drove you down the street, is that this is a larger lot than it is. That also added width of the front is making my side combined worse than it would be if I just had a, you know, hundred foot wide lot because I would only then require to be have a side combined to thirty five feet. My side combined is all the way up to forty two feet. The addition itself is an architectural character in the house, you know. I don't know if you had a chance to see it, but it's a this is a good looking house. It's not, you know, a white and black one that you're seeing all over the place. Or it's got good roof lines, good roof pitches. It's well controlled. Yeah, so I think this addition is actually not even detrimental to the public good, but actually a positive addition on the neighborhood. And I would just ask the board to approve this application. Are there any questions?
I I have a question.
Yeah.
It for clarification. So when I look at the zoning calculation form at the F A R, it seems like this does not conform that R four is twenty six percent and this is twenty seven point six for the proposed. But it's not on the summary of variance, very, I I don't understand that.
Or Well, are you are you on like my form?
I'm on your zoning calculation form.
Yeah, that's that's a mistake, I guess. I cited a variance, but I guess, as in the translation to Eileen, we didn't pick it. The denial letter didn't pick it up.
Wait, wait, so, Tim, are you saying that the applicant requires an F A R variance?
Yeah, I I didn't notice it until she said it. But if you look at my page thirteen and is Eileen on still? Eileen?
I'm here.
If you look at, do you have a completed application with you, Eileen?
Yes.
Just take a look at my page, my page thirteen.
Your page thirteen.
Well, I I think if you go to your page to Amy's point, if you go to your page twelve under floor area ratio residential, the requirement for the R four zone is twenty six percent. And you put in here, propose sixty four thirty square feet, twenty seven point six percent. Is that accurate?
It is. Yeah, I don't see page twelve. I have my page, I have a page thirteen. Well, thirteen says the F A R is
Well, it's labeled page twelve in the
It's attachment F. It's attachment F.
Yeah.
Second page of attachment F. And did the notice say F A R?
I, my, my
It did not notice. The notice does not say.
I cited the application. I I cited an F A R variance, but
We missed it.
Yeah, yeah.
And it was not, and it was not noticed, correct?
It was not.
So we can't hear this.
Right, and right, and it wasn't addressed on the call.
And and actually, in section ten of the application, on your mark page four, where it says, specific sections of the regulation for which variance relief is sought, the F A R is not included.
Yeah, because we took that F A, we took it off the denial letter. Yeah, should we?
It was just because if I look at my denial letter, I didn't have it noted in the section number, and I just just didn't transfer it down. And then I guess Tim just didn't pick it up and it didn't get carried over into I didn't cite the actual number.
We carry?
Yeah, you have to renotice, though.
You can't really carry it because
Right, right.
Yeah, so you have to renotice with the F A R. It's interesting because on the attachment
Unless you can get rid of that one point six percent.
Yeah, I mean, can you get rid of it? Can you get rid of the F A R or not?
Anyway.
Let me see a big one point six percent.
What are we talking about, a four hundred square feet?
Yeah, we we can't.
Want to shrink the office?
Um.
I mean, that's not gonna do the job, but
We would have to shrink. It's the second floor also.
Well, yeah, but I said, if you if you chop, you can chop some out of the office because that's twenty two by, was it twenty two by twelve?
Would it be, would you, would it be okay if you went on and I, is that okay?
Yeah, yeah, we'll come, we'll come back to it.
Okay.
It's about three hundred and eighty one square feet.
Yeah, three eighty one.
Three eighty one.
Not insignificant.
Yeah.
So, all right, we'll go to work on it and then we'll circle back.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
No problem. Um, moving on to calendar thirty eight fifty six twenty two, Chu Chen fifty eight Pine Street. Could you stop sharing your screen?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, or we'll move you, yeah.
This is um. Done, okay.
I mean, can you mute me?
Yep, I'm gonna actually put you guys back in the um. Attendees and then I'll just bring them over.
Thank you.
Doug, this is.
Okay, I think we're all here. Could you unmute yourselves, please?
Okay, and anybody who's going to be testifying, please raise your right hands. Do you swear from testimony about to give tonight to be the truth, hold truth, done for the truth?
I do.
Your names for the record, spelling your names, please, one at a time.
Start, I'm Wei Hong Chen, W E I H U N G C H E N.
I'm Wenxing Zhou, W E N dash S H I N G C H O U.
And I'm Douglas Miller from A H M Architects, two eighty one Main Street, Milburn, New Jersey.
Um, who will be also, who will be speaking this evening?
Uh, my clients are just gonna do a brief introduction, but I'll do primarily all the talking.
Okay, let's qualify you now then, if you could, Mr. Miller.
Sure. Yeah, my name is Douglas Miller. I'm an architect. I've been licensed since two thousand one. My license is in good standing. I've made numerous presentations to this board as well as numerous boards in the surrounding community.
License is in good standing?
It is, yes.
Thank you, sorry, Eileen.
Yeah, I just wanted to um, let Rob know they needed F A R.
Right, so.
We have six.
So, Mr. Miller, as you know, that you need a kind of apropos to the last application. You need a floor area ratio variance and that variance requires five affirmative votes of the board. You currently only have six members tonight, so to, for the board to act favorably on the application, you would need to go five for six. As opposed to having a full complement of the board where you would be able to go five for seven. Okay, do you still, do your clients still wish to proceed tonight?
What do you think?
You like those odds?
Definitely better than five to six, but.
And the reason, the reason why. It's important to consider this is that if the board does not approve the application, in other words, if you do not get the five affirmative votes. You can't come back for a do over because there's a doctrine called Restuata Collateral Lestoppel that basically says that you can't have two bites of the apple. So that's why all applicants should seriously consider whether for any type of use variance, whether the full complement of the board is eligible to vote on a particular application.
So if we did continue, maybe this question is for Eileen, where would, when would we be continued to?
Probably, probably not till May second. Only.
May second.
Yeah, I mean, April fourth is is really um jammed up and we have the Kai Center on the eighteenth and I don't know, a lot of, I don't know that this, this is not going to be a real quick and I I hesitate putting really, really big applications on with the Kai Center because then we know that's, I mean, we could put them on and then that would be the only one in addition to the Kai Center.
Right.
If I, that way.
I think it's always go better to have a greater chance of success, especially with an F A R variance. So my recommendation would be to continue. I just want to make sure it's okay with my clients.
What do you, what do you mean, Doug? What do you mean by continuing? I mean, continue tonight?
So we won't go tonight because there's only six members, so we'll, you know, if possible, we would not move to the next available meeting.
Do you think it would be feasible to put them on the same night as the Kai Center? If I just, I mean, we're not, I don't know that we could divide, devote the entire night to Kai Center, I don't know, it's kind of year up to you guys, I I know.
I guess, I guess my concern with this case is that we do have a lot of, there's a lot of variances here.
Yeah.
So just to speak to the positive and negative criteria of all this, it's not going to be insignificant. Um, you know, the Kai Center, we're still, we still have a lot to go on that, so.
I don't know where we started. It might.
We really haven't started that case.
No, we really haven't.
So May second, it sounds like.
Yeah, I think I'd be more comfortable doing May second than putting you on.
Yeah, I don't want to.
Yeah, that's fine with us, Doug and everyone. Thank you for your time dedication, really appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
And then we'll be, there'll be no further notice given. So anyone here that's in the audience tonight that's here for this case, it will be moved to May second. And like I said, with no further notice. And Eileen, we're gonna still, when we're carrying these applications. It's my understanding that they will continue to be virtual.
We are still going to be virtual, I think, I did speak to Craig, we're, we're gonna we have to kind of gauge the board and I think we're kind of shooting for maybe even June first or July first to be back on site. But definitely we'll still be virtual in May.
Yeah, you'll be virtual because you've noticed that it's a virtual meeting, so we'll stay that way until we advise applicants to change to an in-person meeting in their notice.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, folks. Have a great evening. See you May second.
Bye.
We're right along. Calendar thirty eight fifty eight twenty two. Wendy and Bruce Prashker at twenty six Park Road.
Okay, is that everybody?
Is there anybody else that I need to bring over or other, I have Ms. Prashker and Mr. Nella.
Okay, if you both would just raise your right hands, please. Do you swear from testimony about to give in tonight's hearing to be the truth, hold truth, done for the truth?
Yes.
Yes, if you just state your names and spell your names for the record, please, one at a time.
Should I go first? It's Wendy Prashker, W E N D Y P R A S H K E R. And I'm at twenty six Park Road. Did you ask for that? Sorry.
Thank you. Um, so who'd like to, who would like to speak first?
So I thought I would just do a little introduction and then I'll let Angelo Nella take over. Is that okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, so I'm Wendy Prashker. My husband and I live at twenty six Park Road. His name is Bruce. All of this makes him very nervous, so he's not on with me tonight. So we've been in town since nineteen ninety six. This is our fourth house in town. And ironically, with the smallest piece of property we've had, because we never thought we would put in a pool, a pool. But I guess man plans and God laughs is what they say. So we actually had intentions of we sold our last house downsize to my favorite street in town, which is Park Road. And we thought we'd get a vacation home and then things just changed. We actually did, but as it turned out, I was lucky enough to get a job afterwards that I never thought I would go back to work and now I'm working and I love it. And then COVID hit and we just found that we're here all the time. I lost my dad last year, so I've moved my mom to New Jersey and she's eighty five and my husband has a ninety two year old mother who lives in Union. So we're really here. This is where we are. We weekends, you know, we don't really go away. We love this town. We love our friends in town. And we found that we really just like to be home and so we thought at this point in our lives, maybe we would enjoy a pool in the back. I was very thankful that a few of you came to look at the piece of property that we are lucky enough to live on. And hopefully you'll be able to see that it wouldn't be detrimental to my neighbors. I don't think we would hope that it wouldn't be. And I guess I'll let Angelo take over from here about how hopefully the putting in the pool would actually help us fix up some of the things in the backyard that we haven't noticed were sort of a problem until we started going down and looking at the back. So I hope that I did not take up too much time and Angelo, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. Mr. Prasher. One second, Mr. Nella. I see someone with a hand up in the audience, Francisco Del Campo. Is, is he with you guys or no?
No, he's my next door neighbor.
Okay, so then we'll hold off on that. We'll get to the point where we have comments. Um, so, Mr. Nella, would you please give us your qualifications?
Sure, Angelo Nello, A N G E L O, O N E L L O, licensed engineer and stayed in New Jersey, number four nine two eight four since two thousand eleven. Bachelor of Science, Civil Engineering and Mathematics from the University of Vermont, two thousand six. Been practicing engineering, construction, consulting, pretty much ever since graduation, which has been quite some time now. So definitely have a full niche in single family residential properties, new residential homes, drainage, retaining walls, structural aspects, a lot of swimming pools. Also in the Essex, Bergen County, Morrison, Passaic counties are the predominant counties that we work in. So.
And your license is in good standing?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Your qualifications are accepted by this board.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Uh, yes, thank you. So Wendy, thank you for the introduction, like that can shed a little bit of light on some of the reasons why. Yeah, exactly what you said. I can share my, my plans, correct?
Yes, please do.
Okay. There we go. Believe, so everybody should have, I'm assuming, a hard copy of a few certain items and also digital PDFs, I know.
So, Mr. Nella, before we get going on this. We have a packet of materials that were submitted with the application.
Yes.
With your firm's letterhead, which, which includes, you know, the application also includes a prior resolution from this board for this property from June of twenty seventeen. Are you going to be in presenting your slides here? Is that going to include items that have not yet been submitted to the board?
I don't believe there'll be anything that was not submitted. You, everybody should have received a copy of photographs. So let's start with the site plan.
So this. Yes, no, I just, I just want to get a heads up so that you believe that everything that you're about to present is already in the board's hands in the application file, correct?
Sometimes like during questioning, I'll flip over to Google Earth and use like three D view to spin around and what I, what I've done in the past is like if there's a certain view per se that maybe is worth for a good talking point, I'll make a screenshot of that and I can email it to Eileen David and we'll mark it as in the record if we get there.
If we, if we get to that, then we'll mark those separately. So your representation is that for now that everything you're about to present is part of the application package, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, please proceed.
Okay, what you have before you is a full site plan, zoning analysis, and so a movement for Prashker, stating it on the record for for record purposes, site plan, zoning analysis, and so a moment for Prashker, pool scape and retaining walls, number twenty six Park Road, lot four, block fourteen oh one, township of Milburn, Essex County, New Jersey, prepared by O'Nello Engineering. Myself, Angelo Nello, P E, and address of five Beach Nut Street, Hillsdale, New Jersey, zero seven six four two. With respect to my presentation, is my mic volume okay? Can everybody hear me okay?
That's actually very good.
All right, good to hear. Thank you. Basically, you know, there's a lot of engineering jargon throughout this site plan and rightfully so, it should be because we do a very thorough analysis. But the main talking points per se would be drawings number two and drawing number three. Drawing two is the existing conditions, the current site conditions. It's a full topographic survey of the property. And drawing number three is the overall proposed layout with some colorization, so everybody can get an understanding of what's what. With respect to the existing conditions, which is drawing number two, and again, all these documents are previously provided, so I can just bring these in, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So there is a full photographs packet that was submitted. It's a solid twenty pages. There's a lot of photos, most of them have four pictures on them. So as I'm going through the existing conditions plan, you could, anybody can flip through these photos that they have at their desk to get an understanding of what's what. But I'm gonna just move these out of the screen for now. And back to the existing conditions survey plan. So for all intents and purposes, this is a very well kept property. Landscaping is immaculate. I would have to say Ms. Prashker has a bit of a green thumb in that regard. A lot of perimeter landscaping. There is the area here to the southwest, which this area here is a bit open between the two neighbors, lot five, adjacent lot five to the, to the southwest, which is owned by the Thompsons, who are actually part of this application to a certain degree for interproperty construction access. The, the plan of action would be to, there's really nothing back here within the rear yard of the Thompsons that is, needs to be screened from. It's just an open lawn area. In fact, the both parts of both properties, the rear yards are fully. It's like, how to explain this? It's a, it's a sloped, six feet of slope differential from the back of the house down to the back property line. And very similar, the property next door has the same thing. So the plan of action is to reworks a lot of these dilapidated, impervious and improvements, for instance, the retaining wall that wraps the property is in very bad shape. Wood tie retainers are never really a good idea. I always recommend masonry, they last much, much longer. And there's a lot of patio areas that are just kind of, yeah, you know, they've had better days for, for lack of a better word. So from plan of action is to clean that up and then propose a pool. Which I'll go to drawing number three here, this is the main show, propose a pool. Modest in size sixteen by thirty, nothing too crazy. And even smaller than that would be a proposed patio of four hundred twenty five square feet where was the pool sixteen by thirty is four hundred eighty square feet. Maybe you can see here there's an effigy of some lawn chairs. Didn't come in that well. It's kind of like that. So these are to scale. And basically, the lawn chair is going to be strewn about this, the small patio area which wraps, wraps the west corner of the pool. You can see that is, this area in this location has been cleaned up. A really nice stepper pathway, which would be non-contiguous impervious areas, sometimes there's mulch, gravels, lawn areas in between the steppers, depending on how they're laid down. And then on the right side of the property, this is going to get all completely cleaned up and turned into a nice widened lawn area for maintenance access for lawnmowers, et cetera, to the, to the rear yard. So if I flip back to drawing number two. You can see this area here is not much landscaping going on. And same thing here, this is, it's quite a bit haphazard in that regard. I'm not saying it's not like kept well landscaping, but like it's degrading and it's starting to create a bit of a drainage issue, which goes down between the Thompsons. It's degrading and it's starting to create a bit of a drainage issue, which goes down between the Thompson's garage and driveway. And the side of this dilapidating retaining wall. So plan of action would be to fix a lot of the drainage issues that are on site now. When I first met with the Prashkers, you know, obviously we're very interested in a pool, but I said, hey. You know, if you're gonna be doing this kind of work, you should really look into upgrading a lot of some of the stormwater facilities and here's why. So Wendy and Bruce and I were on the same page with what the presentation would be of. And then I went through with the requirements would be of what they would need and then to put a game plan together. So the property itself is in the R four zone, the which is a requirement of twenty thousand square feet. I'm still enjoying number three, by the way. Existing is twelve thousand square feet, which is deficient by eight thousand square feet. So for all intents and purposes, it's an undersized lot. And the proposed, sorry, moving around a bit, the proposed lot coverage after doing some cleanup. Will actually be an increase of five hundred ninety seven square feet. Doesn't count, but mind you, four hundred eighty of that is water surface, which doesn't generally create a runoff issue. Water that rains in the pool stays in the pool. I know it's apples and oranges. We're talking a lot covered standpoint. But from a drainage standpoint, that actually helps, especially with a sloped backyard. So the true hardscape increase here is roughly a hundred seventeen, it's a hundred seventeen square feet of actual hardscape. But five hundred ninety seven square feet of increase of overall improvements, including the pool water service area. Which brings us to a total lot coverage of forty point eight four percent versus thirty five point, excuse me, thirty five percent. The the limit that's allowable for the zone. There is no stuttering there is that the pre-existing lot coverage is actually slightly over thirty five point eighty seven percent. Kind of de minimis, but no, it's gonna get cleaned up. And so in doing so, one thing is I take a look at is the deviation. For the, what's the limit? What's the overage? And what is the percent deviation, which comes out to. Well, forty point eight four percent over thirty five. The differential comes down to sixteen point seven percent deviation. Well, another thing we can look at. Is the. The overall, if you were to take the proposed lot coverage that we're presenting four nine oh one. And divide it into a twenty thousand square foot lot. It comes out to twenty four and a half percent lot coverage versus thirty five percent. So if this were a conforming lot. Then it would be well under the lot coverage, which that's another way to look at it. I know it's this property is not of that size, but that's my point is like if it were a conforming lot. If you look at the overall zone here. Did some extended off-site mapping. We like to do things in ten scale makes it a lot clearer. No real ambiguity, lots of notes, lots of dimensions, six ways from Sunday, if you will, that you, if you need an information, it's on this plan and. If for some reason it's not, I'll certainly get it for you. But the property surrounded by three residences and backyard to the rear has a pool. The property to the left, which is lot three, number twenty, Park Road also has a pool. If you look at the overall layouts of the properties, kind of similar. For instance, the property to the northeast, which is twenty eight, adjacent property has a long gated driveway, garage at the rear, a pool. A residence. In this case, the driveway shortened. Yes, there was a prior application, I'm aware of. Where the garage was appended to the home, which after being in the home, it came out quite nice, mind you. Also, the rear deck is in great shape. A lot of these photographs that we have will definitely show you. These are the dilapidated retaining walls I'm talking about, the wood ones that are rotting. Yet the landscaping is well kept. So with the rotting wood, it's a matter of time before they fail. But you can see here like the deck is, sorry. It's in pretty good shape and very well built. I also designed decks and it's nice to see. Take a look at some structural aspects of it and go, hey, this is in pretty good shape. Somebody did a good job here. So if we could salvage the deck for rear yard access, I'm gonna try and find a good picture here. Bear with me. Sorry. There's one like we're perched up over the deck. So there's a deck in the background and the proposed tool be pretty much. In this area. More or less. So you could see it's quite a nice entry to come down. This is a short staircase. And then make the way up to the steps up to the backyard. I mean, the the rear of the residence where it accesses the kitchen at the first floor level. So that's one of the things about the elevation difference from the property is that it drops off quite a bit. So having the deck remain as is for existing outdoor access to the first floor, I think is important. And then. We obviously have the layout, which would be down below, just small patio area and a pool, which would be sticking out of the ground to some degree. It's a, for the most part, it's all in ground, but the the rear side of it, which is the southeast side, which faces downhill, for those of you who know how to read contours. These are the elevations. So basically, the the top of the pool coping on the backside would be about four and a half, five feet out of the ground. But immediately across from it would be all these pine rows. It's quite well hidden. So a lot of the soils that would be excavated from the pool would be used to fill in the site, make a little bit more of a usable lawn area. Because when you're comparing this lawn area. To the elevation of the rear lower patio areas, it's a bit of a difference. And and the photos don't really do it justice, but it does drop off. You can kind of see. So in this location here, this is where the pool will be kind of sticking out of the ground a little bit. That makes any sense for you. There was a full, I'm not gonna go through it, but the the full binder package summary report, hopefully a lot of you have had a chance to read through it. Working with the Prashkers and pressing the requirements and the variances requested. I think we put together a formidable package, nothing too adequate control, nothing too crazy. We spoke with the Thompsons next door to the, let me get my bearings, to the southwest, which is lot five. They they signed on with cleaning up the property line. I know it's a bit of an issue. You can see that on drawing number five here. Excuse me, drawing number six, the construction access would go onto their their side yard. Two trees need to be removed, in particular, a very large tree, which is quite overgrown. That will need to be removed and the whole property line would be restabilized with a new retaining wall. New landscape planting and of course a pool fence that will wrap the entire perimeter. So there are lot coverage variances, what we hear for for overall and the rear yard. Depending on the interpretation of the board engineer or the town engineer, there is a full slopes analysis that we provided. There's, we've done it both ways for to be crystal clear. We did slopes analysis for lot four and lot five. Because the disturbance went over each one, so we thought that'd be the proper thing to do.
Is is there any variances that are required in connection with steep slope disturbance on either lot?
Well, that's what we're trying, when we submitted, it wasn't in the letter of denial. But the analysis was provided and depending on the interpretation of the town engineer. There may be. But it would need to be reviewed and we haven't got a review back. This was submitted back in January. And if not well before that, we had plans submitted in November. So the only review we've had is a letter of denial. From or referral to the zone board of adjustment from Ms. David, which pointed out the permitted versus proposed, like the obvious ones. But i- in many cases, we do put the language in the. Excuse me, in the public notice for any other all variances that go along with it. And then the slopes analysis is definitely provided.
Has to be provided and you need to work with the engineer to determine if if in fact the steep slope variance is required. She's only gonna use your property to do that analysis. And then the neighboring property would have to determine that they're not exceeding the thousand, thousand square feet as well.
Yeah, so so a couple of things. First of all, Mr. Nella, as the engineer on the project. It's it's your obligation to. Do the analysis, perform the analysis and then take the position as to whether you require a steep slope. Disturbance variance or not. Do you require a variance as far as you can tell?
Based on what you're saying, I would say for lot, our lot predominantly, because it's over a thousand square feet would be. Yes, we would require a variance.
And that's in twenty percent slope though? I mean. You just said it's slope six feet from front to back. Isn't that what you said? Or did I miss?
Yeah, approximately, depending like, I just like a rule of thumb, like from the back of the residence, from the back where that retaining wall comes down for where the deck is. To the rear property line is about six feet. And then here's the full analysis of all the, we use civil three D software to do the analysis to. Figure out what zones are what 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 slope areas, categories.
I mean, because steep slope by our ordinance is anything in excess of twenty percent.
Okay, so anything in excess of twenty percent, the disturbance area that we have is five hundred ten square feet.
All right, then you should be fine. Yeah, I mean, you can only disturb a thousand square feet of steep slope area, which is twenty percent slope. I don't think you really have.
It's really not a severe slope, but there are.
Yeah, that's why I, that's why I just kind of.
So based on.
There is no issue with the sea slopes.
I I think and based on our review we just did here, I think you are correct. That's what I'm saying, like interpretation wise. Now that you said that anything in excess of twenty percent, we have here from the analysis is five hundred ten square feet, which is not that much. But I did the full analysis for zero to ten, ten to twenty, and then twenty plus, just for thoroughness purposes. So I guess I recant that last statement. We do not need a variance in that regard. We are here for lot coverage. And on, now with respect to that, real quick, there's no.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Just before we leave this issue, with regard to lot five. You you talked about the fact that you need temporary construction easement from lot five.
We don't need, but it'd be a good idea and we did it. We have it signed. We have it notarized. The Thompsons provided.
So so besides that issue for temporary construction easement. Is there any more development that's being proposed on lot five that is triggered by your application on lot four?
To, no, no, just access and clean up the property line, like the landscaping, build a new wall. It makes sense. Like that there's nothing else involved with lot five other than.
Okay, good, because that's what I was just want to confirm for purposes of the notice, et cetera.
The notice. And then new wall conforms in height?
Uh, yes, we definitely went through that. And the notice was also provided two hundred foot property within lot five as well. We did the full, the full, just to make sure.
Thank you.
Yes, definitely. And is there Mr. Plotner? Am I saying that correctly?
Platenor.
I'm sorry, Platenor. The. The heights on here show the different elevations, like if you, basically what you do is you subtract the two. So in this location here, I'll just, for example, like you see the top of walls three twenty three and the bottom of walls three twenty one. So it's like a three foot wall that goes down. At the very end, it's looks like it's about three feet high. Little over three and change. I mean, the wall that's there now. It's basically gonna be verbatim. You see right here.
Yeah, and I saw, I saw, I saw it today. Yeah.
Okay, good. It's great that some people have been able to get to the property. And then with respect to the location of the pool, there are no setback variances involved. It's strictly for lot coverage. And I feel that the benefits outweigh the detriments because we are planning on. We designed a full upgrade of the stormwater facilities and it's all entailed on drawing number four. Put another stone what a dry well in. All new drainage catch basins, reroute any broken pipes. Extensive landscaping along the perimeter definitely helps with that as well. So the, you know, removing some overgrown trees, dilapidated wood tie wall, that's failing. The proposed conditions we feel are some significant upgrades to a property that's already in good shape as it is. It's gonna be much better, we feel. And that's pretty much the end of my presentation. I'm sure there's questions.
Thank you. Could you please stop sharing your screen, please?
You got it.
Thank you.
To answer my questions, though, can I reshare or?
Absolutely.
Okay, all right, hang on. There you go.
Any que- questions for this witness from the board?
Can I just ask, Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, Mr. Mr. Nella, I noticed that you received a. Some variances a number of years ago and or the applicant did in connection with this property, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, or or any of the variances that were granted? Are they exacerbated in any way by this current application?
The variances were granted were for the side, the side yard. So to answer your question, I know, because this would be rear yard lot coverage. And hold on, I'm looking at the bulk zoning chart here on the plans.
There was no lock coverage issue with the last.
Right, I didn't find any. I'm just double checking.
No accessory coverage issue, it seems to.
Because there was one. The accessory garage was removed and it became part of the residence, like a superstructure. Yeah.
Thank you.
I have a question. Thanks. So you know, our our town has, I think it's well known that we have issues with flooding and stormwater management. And so I always have some concern about, you know, coverage of lot. So can you just talk a little bit about that particular point as it relates to this application? And you know, what would be done to help prevent, you know, to to help manage stormwater and to prevent, you know, further. Exacerbation of that situation.
Absolutely, commanding here and sharing my screen. I hope that's okay. The. Drawing number four is dedicated to drainage and grading. It's kind of the standard called the site engineering plan. This is the one that the contractors are really building for stormwater and grading purposes. A couple of things here. This area right here now, which is the pool. Is lawn and water that falls from the sky hits this lawn and it goes straight onto the rear yard property. You can see we even marked existing drainage patterns throughout based on the the mapping and my site observations. When we put a pool here, the water that falls in the pool stays in the pool up to six inches. So I guess, yes, it's always possible there can be a storm that had more than six inches of water. But for all intents and purposes, that takes it out of the equation. Not from a lot coverage standpoint, but from a stormwater runoff standpoint. Then what we have here is there's an existing drywall that we've known about based on prior records. And the plan is to piggyback that with a new drywall right adjacent to it to make. Basically doubled size, an additional five hundred gallon drywall. And we would do is we have the new patio area here. Using pink now. And this will be. This patio area here is gonna drain directly to the new stormwater drywall. As with connecting the existing roof leaders that we know about. We found them all. We marked them all. There's all notes for reset. For instance, there's a drain box on the backside of the garage here. The call out now, note says to reset the drain box and discharge pipe connection if and as necessary, clear of any debris. I mean, we're trying hard here to really upgrade the stormwater facilities on this property. So all of the roof gutter downspouts, that stands for DS for downspout, all the locations are shown. These two locations here discharge onto the lawn. And this one goes onto the driveway, but that goes to this drain here, which the plan of action is to clean out the downside of the drain. Carried around, connected to the new system and basically capture as much as we can. Especially installing new drains underneath the deck because we're planning on building a new concrete retainment, probably structurally designed with. With concrete and steel reinforcement and a footing underneath the deck. We want to capture the water to these inlets here. And similarly, take the water downhill and put it into the drywells. And then if the drywells fill up, we've sized them based on certain calculations. If they fill up. The existing drainage pattern will be withheld and water would continually runoff down onto the backyard of lot thirty nine. Which is quite a wooded area. I was poking around, looking over the fence and I didn't see anything that was just too, you know, nothing detrimental. It was really more of like. Around the perimeter of the. Around the perimeter of the residence itself that there was some issues that could be fixed, so we're entailing that. As well as the shared property line with lot five, so undoubtedly this would be a benefit stormwater runoff. That answers your question.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, if you stop sharing, I appreciate it.
Mr. Platten, Mr. Chairman, can I just ask a question regarding the stormwater management? Is there going to be a? Well, first of all, is there any work that needs to be done with regard to the existing drywall? In terms of repairs so that it's properly functioning?
I didn't notice any issues with the existing drywall, a lot that is buried. It's no issue to open it up, make sure it's cleaned out, we could put a note on that plan to that effect. Which is, I think, when I was saying here, hold on, let me just look at my plan real quick, I may have already had a call out note.
Yeah, and, and also about whether you have any maintenance manual that's going to be associated with the existing or the new drywall so that they're cleaned out. You know, based on a schedule.
So on the, yes, on the plan. Can I share my screen?
Sure.
Sure, hang on here. This is drawing number seven, which is construction details, typically we don't have too much of a maintenance plan for. Single family residential drywall, but there are directive notes in here. Specifically number four, property owner responsible for maintenance of drywall seepage pit minimum four times annually every three months. And after any storm resulting in a one inch rainfall event. So what we do is we fit the drywells with an inspection port to surface. And then what happened here in the prior cases, it was buried, but we would. I don't think that's a good idea to bury the drywells, you should always have an inspection court for that reason alone, it's just like, hey, make sure this thing's working, okay? Or is there a clog and what better way to do it than run a six inch port to surface? Which is specified on this drawing, not only here, but also on the, the prior drawing I was speaking about. Drawing number four, which is the site engineering plan. We specified to have the six inch port at the surface, we could fit the other tank with one as well. Had some directive notes in here, install the new drywall outer stone limit directly adjacent to the existing. Paraphrasing, a contractor shall confirm location of existing drywall without novel engineering. Install six inch PVC riser inspection port cap that surfaces with slotted great cap for basin overflow. So it doubles as not only inspection, but if it were to overflow, it would come out the, the cap.
Okay, so the, so the, so that's going to be for the existing drywall as well.
We, I can make that a lot clearer to do so, yes.
Thank you.
And just, Mr. Nella, just so that you are aware, if the application should be approved, all of the grading would have to be addressed by our engineering department. She will take into account the pool as well as the patio as. Requiring mitigating stormwater management.
Yep, for the calculation.
Yeah, Joe, hang on a second.
I, I do have a question of the witness.
Sure.
Can you?
Can I, can I just answer that last?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, it's important we get this on the record, the, the calculation we use is a three inch per hour rainfall intensity, which is a hundred year storm event. And then we convert that to feet and then increasing a lot of coverage, which is the five ninety-seven, which does include the water surface, the pool. And therefore a hundred fifty cubic feet is required and we size the drywall accordingly, so.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not familiar, I don't know exactly what the calculations they use, we'd have to abide by whatever they require you capture.
Sure, we, no, no contest to any additional requirements in that regard, I think that what we've provided is pretty substantial.
Thank you, Joe, your question, please.
Yes, I would like the witness to review all the new. Landscaping that he intends to put in mainly for the benefit of our attorney. Who has to draw the memorializing resolution. Resolute and tear. So can you review the new landscaping?
Angelo, do you want, do you want me to address that or no?
Yeah, let's tag team that Wendy and I'll let you use my screen here. So you can see that basically the, the light green there is the pre-existing. And the darker green is the proposed. And go ahead, Wendy.
So I actually, the positioning of the pool was very important to us for a few reasons. One, because that's the side of the yard where the sun would hit. But also I wanted to make sure that we didn't need impervious land coverage. On that whole side of the pool, so what we plan on doing is fencing and then in front of the fencing. From the left side, if you will, of the pool. On the side, all the way back will be planting, so that's sort of what's along the side of the pool, it will be greenery. And we have those existing trees that we put in. When we moved into the house and I happen to love putting in trees, so we will put. As many as are required or you like to screen. I don't know if that answers, if that's what you're concerned about, but we're happy to put in trees.
Wait, Wendy, I think Mr. Steinberg, no, that's a very good. Initial synopsis, what he was asking is like probably, Mr. Steinberg, it was your question, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
The, are you looking for quantity or type of species? Cause we're looking, okay, so what we're doing is looking to match verbatim, you can see here, this is the area that we're proposing the pool, this is the photos I was looking for earlier when I was saying I was perched up on the deck. It's pretty significantly planted already. So we're planning to leave this as is, we don't see any real detriment there, but looking over here on the plan view. Sharing my screen here, the. We're planning on planting a row here and these are two scale, so these are, if I can get you a measurement of what the spacing is. And then we can back into a quantity. Okay, so these are spaced to three feet, which realistically, that's a little tight. So what we can do is just take the linear footage and let's say. Let's just call it five feet. Let's say five foot spacing, so we have about a sixty foot run.
What are you proposing, what are you proposing to put in there?
There would be arborvitae, evergreen of sorts, maybe a green giant arborvitae would probably not be the best tree, but that could be up to the prosecutors if they want. There's other type of fujia plants that are a little bit more narrow, easily maintained, you can maintain them at about a ten to twelve foot height. By calculation here, if we did five feet on center, which is still kind of tight, they can be staggered as well, I'm coming up with twelve. So along this property line here, so if we want to get a direct quantity, we could say twelve along the top of the wall and six additional. Along the back. Shared property line with the southwest with lot five, so what we can do is come up with a number, say twelve. Twelve smaller fujia plantings and then six additional with maybe a caveat. If this application should be approved, a caveat and a resolution that comes along the lines of. The prosecutors will take no contest if the town engineer requests another tree or two. I mean, it's not going to make or break anything.
I'm always hesitant putting in quantity, so. Because I think the health of the tree is more important than saying you're just going to jam trees in.
Yeah.
So, you know, this, this, this board, this board is not a board that is. Has any opinion on, you know, being an arborist, so to speak. So I would leave it up to the, the town arborist. Along with making a decision as to the screening, how it would be spaced to make sure the plantings are healthy.
Thank you for that, that does make good sense.
But your intention is to put it along that sixty foot run in, and ample screening that would. You know, leave a healthy planting along with proper screening.
Absolutely.
Any other questions in regard to this? Any other questions from board members for Mr. Nella or Ms. Ms. Prashker? Okay, Mr. Nella, you can. Stop the screen share. Next, we'll go to the audience with any questions. Now, I know Mr. Del Campo, you've had your hand up for fairly long time, but this is a time for questions of either the applicant. Or the applicant's professional, so we can bring you over, but if it's a comment, we would, we would. Have you hold out a second, so we'll bring you on over. If there's anybody else, please raise your hand as well as we will get to you. Okay, looks like Mr. Del Campo's hand is down, but Mr. Mark Golis and Zoom twenty-three is up. I can hear you, I lean, you're muted.
They brought him over, I don't know where he went.
Oh, okay.
He disappeared. All right, let me.
I see, I see him in the audience, but.
Oh, yeah, maybe he didn't, okay, so. Okay. Bring Mr. Del Campo over. Well, okay, there we are.
Okay, Mr. Del Campo, if you could please unmute yourself and turn your camera on, I greatly appreciate it.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
I'm okay, thank you, and I'm, I'm. You know, there were, I guess, just a couple of questions with respect to, I think the pool is a great idea, we have one. And given the situation that. Ms. Prashkar has described, I think it would be a benefit certainly to her family. The, the questions and issues I have and really have to do with the sighting of the pool. Now, it's, it's oriented in a way that's a little peculiar. But more precisely, the, the fact that it's so much of the proposed patio, pool, et cetera, if you go, can go back to that.
Do you have a question here? Mr. Del Campo, do you have a question for either one?
What is the rationale for the sighting of the pool? And why is it all weighted on one part of the property?
Can I answer that? Would that be okay?
Sure.
Sure, so it actually was purposeful in a few reasons, I know that you live next door, so you're, so that's where we get the sun. It's weighted on that side also so that we could have the side of the pool completely green instead of having to have. Sort of patio around the entire pool. And I also know that there are sometimes people, if we, if and when we ever have to or sell the house. We were hoping to keep a chunk of yard as yard. So I never liked looking at a house where like you walk outside and if kids have a swing set, you have to walk around the pool. So it was purposeful to weight it to that side of the yard for those reasons, not for any other reason. It was, it seemed to make the most sense to us to keep pure yard as much as we could, we sort of split the yard in half. So it was pure yard on one side. And then the pool on the other, where we get the sun and also again for the impervious land coverage on the left side. So thank you for, for asking, it had no, it has no other reason than that and thank you for thinking it's a nice idea. So, okay, sorry, I hope I answered that question.
Mr. Del Campo, do you have any other questions for the applicant or professional?
No other questions. Assuming that there's a period for comment.
There absolutely will be, so. We'll move on to the next person, you just stop sharing that real quick, I know it's a pain to go back and forth, but.
Not a problem.
So, Mr. Mark Golis is up next, Howard Mark Golis.
Did that work?
We have you, yes, so.
So I'm, I actually am going to join the commentary, I, I just wanted to clarify two things that were said. One, a pool is impervious coverage, correct? That's, that is the fat, a fact for this, for the board, right, that's how it's calculated?
Is the question.
We don't have. We, we have lot coverage, whether it's pervious or impervious, it's lot coverage if it's covering, if it's accessory in nature.
Okay, so whether the rain stays in the pool or not is kind of irrelevant from that standpoint, correct?
From zoning.
Okay. Perfect, the other thing is, I, I, and this is just a question, I think on the zoning calculation form. There might have been a mistake and I just want to clarify that before we went forward. So. If you look on the second page under building coverage and accessory use building coverage. It says they're both conforming, but I think they're both non-conforming, I just want to clarify whether that was correct or not.
I'm looking at the.
I can pull, I can share the video screen if you want to have.
Yeah, please do as to what you're referring to.
I have the packet here as well, but yeah, please do.
Does that come up?
No, did not. Which attachment, which attachment are you looking at, is it attachment F or?
It's part of the submission package.
Yeah, I'll share mine, hold on, here you go.
Sure, go ahead.
This is the submission package, is this the sheet you're looking at?
Yeah.
Okay.
So go to the second page.
On here.
Yeah, so it says building coverage, it says it's seventeen and our forge fourteen, so that would say non-conforming, is that correct?
That's not part of this application, you have no building coverage in this.
Yeah, that's a, that's a pre-existing condition based on the prior application, sir. There was a prior application.
So, so if you look at this application, you see it's a little confusing because the applicant put on. Previously applied for conditions that were approved under a prior memorialization.
Correct, in seventeen, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Right, so, so yes, that wasn't, that was an oversight, but it was a previously approved. Non-conformity under the preview, under the, under the previous memorialization.
Yeah, the only two variances. Being caused by this work are lot coverage and accessory.
So the reason was.
Are pre-existing considering they already did the work. And they had a variance for it.
Basically, I marked it, yes, it conforms with a prior approved application. And then on the, the site plan itself, on the table, I show that it's pre-existing. Pre-existing condition.
Pre-existing through, got it, so, okay, I understand what you're saying.
It's a, an interpretational thing, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's, because it. It just, there are a number of them that are above compliance as a result, but those are previous, I got.
Mr. Nella, just so that for clarification for the record, you know, keeping, keeping what we have up here as part of the second page of attachment F. Where, where you say pre-existing. Do you mean that those were conditions for which variance approval was previously granted by this board?
Correct. It was previously granted.
Right, I mean, technically, and they're not pre-existing, non-conforming, they actually were approved by there, so. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any further questions, Mr. Margolis?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, there will be time for comment, if you have that, next up we have Zoom twenty-three. Do they lower their hand? You're muted.
I brought over Zoom twenty-three, but it brought Mr. Del Campo back over.
Hi, I do not have a question at this time, I just have a comment, so I will.
Yourself, please, your name?
Oh, Lisa Romano, Twenty Park Road, Short Hills, New Jersey.
Thank you, your question?
I don't have a question, I have comments.
Bring you back, we'll bring you back over.
That's why I lowered my hands.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay.
Sure, next up, anyone else have any questions for either the applicant or the architect at this point? Okay, now we'll be moving to comments from the attendees, so anyone that has a comment regarding this case. Please raise your hand. Okay, Mr. Margolis is first up. Okay, Mr. Margolis is first up.
Oh, bear with me, bear with me.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Margolis, okay.
All right, that worked.
Miss Margolis, you need to raise your right hand, you have to be sworn in for a comment. Do you swear from testimony about to give in this hearing to be the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Name and address for the record.
Howard Margolis, fourteen Crossgates, Short Hills, New Jersey. I'm within the two hundred foot notice lot forty behind the applicant.
Please proceed.
So just one thing I wanted to note before we started, my neighbor unfortunately had an emergency and to fly out tonight. He is the reference lot thirty-nine that was referenced earlier, which is the property behind it as a pool. He sent a note to Ms. David who notified him that I can't speak on his behalf, unfortunately, but he did. I believe Ms. David, you were going to put it in the file, correct?
Yeah, I did inform him that I put it in the file, but the board members do not take written testimony.
Do not take his testimony, anyway.
Right.
Okay, for what it's worth, he is unfortunately had to fly out of town for emergency, but he feels similar as I do, so. The, the issue that we see is being, you know, the downstream residents, I think it was Lutu before, the town has serious problems with the, with flooding. And my property as well as the other have had to put in French drains, additional some pumps, rock swell channels as a result of a lot of the work that's been done above us. For instance, Thirty-six Park created a, a really big problem for both of us, or the neigh, all three neighbors below. And so we're, we're vehemently opposed to approving this primarily because of the detriment that we've experienced, not just with large, large rainfall, but even, you know, moderate rainfall. And it, it's washed away our vegetation and created really channels of water. And I think you'll, you'll see that it's almost like a waterfall fleck effect as it comes down. If you don't mind, I'm going to share my screen, I think I figured out how to do it here. Does that work?
Oh, yes, we're looking at the zoning table right now.
Great, so the zoning table, notwithstanding that the others, you know, we're not discussing today, there've been, I think, nine granted variances, and the overall impact has been that the floor area ratio is over, the building coverage is over, the side yard is now five feet. And what this does is it creates, just to give you a quick example, areas that because of the pretty intense slope.
Wait, wait, hold on a second, hold on a second.
Yes.
So, hold on.
These are all the filed plans, I'm sorry, I didn't note that for you.
Okay, yeah, but, but hold on a second, because you have, I assume that these yellow and orange markings are your markings?
They are.
Okay, so what we're going to do, and I let it go for the prior screen share because it was just a replication of the attachment F that was in the application package, but this is something a little different because you also wrote on it. So what we're going to do is that we're going to mark, you're going to provide this when we're done to Ms. David.
Sure.
And we're going to mark, do you have, and it looks like you have other exhibits as well. We're going to mark your entire exhibit package as O one.
Okay.
For objector one. And so as we go forward, besides provide them to Ms. David, if you can, for each one, explain what your markings are intended to depict and which sheet you actually marked up.
Absolutely, sorry about that.
It's okay.
So this is the site engineering plan that was submitted. And this is the site plan. And so the markings here intended to show, as you get more coverage area, and you, the water actually funnels onto the sides because of, the slope gets pretty intense at these levels, you can see the lines are close together. As a result, the catchment bases that were described are here in yellow, they're at like mid-property. And so as the, as the water comes down these areas, if it doesn't catch these, you know, the catchment basins, it gets funneled into, you know, almost a, you know, like a hose. And that all transfers down past the properties and flows, this is the actual, as they mentioned, the direction of the property flow and water flow. So that's one of the issues that we're concerned about is.
Excuse me, excuse me, is there a significance in the two different colors you're using? Or do they all represent the same thing?
Yeah, no, apologies, the yellow is the catchment area, these are the pipes that were described for the drywall. And then the pinkish, ignore this yellow because it ran out. The pinkish areas are the areas where it funnels down to a narrow, narrow channel and extends out to the back of the property. The next thing I, I wanted to highlight, which we discussed, which you discussed already, and we don't have to follow, is the intensity of the, of the slope as it gets to the, to the back of the property. The, the other point I wanted to talk about, and I can close this down, so we don't have to. So the lot coverage, one of the questions that was asked by the board was, or is anything here going to exacerbate the existing conditions and, and the lot coverage will, it'll go from thirty-five eight, which is in excess of the thirty-five that's allowed, to forty point eight. And so all of this additional coverage just creates more surface area that's going to shed water and continue to, to run down to the back of our properties. And so I, I just think that given the lots just not big enough for the site and for some of the uses that are intended, it's just not a twenty thousand square foot lot, which just seems like it doesn't, the, the burden seems to now get transferred to the homeowners below and creates additional expense and problems for us as opposed to being captured at the, the site here, so. I don't. It's not something that we're support, supportive of, that's it.
Yeah, can I ask Mr. Margolis a couple of questions?
Sure, go ahead, please.
Mr. Margolis, are you an engineer?
I'm not, but I'm a real estate professional, so I've built and developed and acquired over ten billion properties.
And there was testimony about the addition of a new drywall in addition to the existing one, that seems to be in the path of some of the areas that you've highlighted. What are your thoughts on the additional drywall as a mitigator for runoff onto your property?
So, as I noted, the catchments are in mid-property. So the drywall is also on one side of the property, right? So to the extent that water would flow to that side, I, I think it would catch some of it. The issue is what I've experienced is there's a drywall that was put in as part of a variance above me at thirty-six. And because of the, as was noted, the height of the backyard brick, I guess, and for instance, in this, if there's a pool that's, you know, four feet off the ground, it creates a waterfall cascade, which is just too quick, you know, the water starts moving too fast to get caught by that. So I'm, I'm not that sympathetic to the actual impact. And candidly, people don't clean out their catchments four times a year as, as, as was noted.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, any other comments, Mr. Margolis?
No, thank you.
Okay. We'll be moving on to our next attendee, Francisco Del Campo.
Thanks again, I think some of.
Wait, 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 hold on one second, first, can you, can you lower your screen a little bit so we could see you, not just the top of your head? There you go. Can you just raise your right hand so we can swear you in?
Sure.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give tonight in this hearing to be the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Your name and address for the, the record.
Francisco Del Campo, and I live next door to the Prashka family, I'm at Twenty-Eight Park Road.
And, and by next door, you mean to the left as a right when facing the property?
The left.
Thank you. Please proceed.
So like Mr. Margolis, I too have concerns regarding the runoff. Just based on the previous variance where, that was provided for a garage that is five feet away from the property, we've experienced runoff just from that. The fact that the placement of the pool and the patio, that's a large part of air, of the area that's not going to be permeable. The slope is not just down as Mr. Margolis indicates, but also slopes towards our property. Given that we've already had runoff from one variance that had been provided, and given the lack of permeability of the property, given the coverage, we're concerned about the runoff. You know, unfortunately, we received the certified mail, it was sent out March tenth. We have been scrambling to get a, an engineer out here, he's scheduled to come out this week to provide more of a determination with respect to whether there is, the extent to which there may be hydrologic trespass and provide some potential numbers with respect of the rate of runoff, the change in the rate of runoff and other aspects that would impact our property as Mr. Margolis presented in his sort of tan circles. It's clear that it's going to be impactful to the base of our property as well as the base of the Thompson property. We're really not convinced that the mitigation of efforts that have been placed by, by Mr. O'Nell in, or Nello, excuse me, in his plans are going to be sufficient. I have no, again, I have no objection to the pool, I have no objection to the patio, I think maybe, I think there's an issue there just because of its scale. But its positioning, I think, is unfortunate. It is far more, it's not centered, and I understand Ms. Prashkar's desire for a, a very nice and open front lawn, but I think that presents potential drainage issues. And I've bemoaned the fact, quite honestly, that this request for a variance really didn't come my way until just, just last week, late last week, so. Or I would have had some evidence from a, of an expert. So I think that's the gist of my objection. Again, you know, it's great, I think a pool's terrific idea, I just don't think it's, the sighting is right, I don't, I think the, the scope of the coverage isn't quite right either. And those are essentially my, my objections to it.
Thank you very much, anyone have any questions for us? Okay.
One, one quick question, Mr. Del Campo, so you're, you're testifying to the fact that from your perspective, there's an existing runoff issue already, but you're not necessarily testifying that the pool will add to that, is that correct?
There's no way that I could make that determination without someone with an expertise, which is why I bemoaned the fact that I was given such short notice, I would have had sort of an SME or an expert witness on hand, but I can't do that given the, the notice.
Okay.
I can, however, indicate that the issues that we've encountered were not these, you know, bizarre events that we've experienced recently with Hurricane Aubrey and I think it was Ida. But in fact, just a significant rainfall has created some, some issues, so. That's my fear, that, you know, the, the, the top topography, the runoff, the excessive coverage, I think will all present issues, to be honest.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
All right, thank you, Mr. Del Campo. Anything further? Anything further?
Not for me, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next attendee, I mean, that was Mrs. Romano, was Zoom twenty-three.
Hi, you just raise your right hand, please.
Sure.
Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's hearing to be the truth, hold truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address for the record.
Lisa Romano, Twenty Park Road, Short Hills, New Jersey.
And where is your home located in relation to the subject property?
Two houses towards Old Short Hills Road away from the Prashkas.
Okay. So you comment?
Okay, I am protesting this variance for the following reasons. This non-conforming R four lot has received five variances in two thousand seventeen, which included converting an existing structure to a garage and moving it approximately six feet from its neighbor's property, which doesn't even meet R six zoning guidelines, let alone R four. It should be noted that the adjacent homeowner, Mr. De Campo, objected to this variance, variance, but it was still granted by your board then. It is also unclear to me if there are previous variances granted to the prior owners, but there was construction done in this house back in two thousand three to two thousand five. Now the homeowners are applying for two additional variances. Two years ago, this applicant hired an attorney and adamantly protested the rezoning of the street and objected to the more liberal zoning that was recommended by the township planner. How convenient that the homeowners are now seeking variance release for more liberal zoning since it is for their benefit, but adamantly opposed it previously. What is the hardship to the applicant? The hardship is to the property owners on Crossgates who will experience the downhill water flow due to the severely sloped landscape and excessive block coverage that they are seeking. In my opinion, if this variance is granted, it is based upon the friendships that the applicant knows and not the merit of the application. This was made very clear to me two years ago when the township planner was tasked to review the zoning on Park Road and Park Circle. The township planner recommended to change the zoning on the street, but because of the residents who opposed it and that were friendly with members of various Milburn Township boards, the proposal was removed and rejected by the township committee without a public discussion, which in my opinion is a violation of the sunshine law. I also was told that the township committee fired the township planner after his results were made public. I request that the board review this application on its merit. The excessive number of variances, the variances for this one property and the lack of hardship should be the deciding factors for this application, not who you know or the family dynamics, which is irrelevant in a zoning decision. Thank you.
I have a question for you, what are you talking about? What do you, who are you accusing of this?
I'm not accusing anyone of anything, I'm saying that two years ago, the township planner said that this neighborhood should be rezoned to be an R six, and Mrs. Prashkar was opposed to it, but she wants to be called an R four, but wants to get variances for an R six, because it's.
No, your, your accusatory comments about family and are you, are you saying this word?
In my opinion, I believe that because of friendships, things got done the way they did. That is my opinion.
Friendships with who?
I'm not disclosing names in, on a public forum, I'm just saying in my opinion, I believe that there were friendships. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions?
I don't see any of their hands.
Okay, then we'll close the public portion of this meeting.
Am I allowed to speak yet, or do you want me not to say anything?
I, I mean, I, I mean, Rob, I, there's some serious accusations there.
First of all, let's, uh, let's remove Ms. Romano since we've closed the public portion of the meeting, so at this stage, Ms. Prashkar or Mr. O'Nello by way of rebuttal testimony, rebuttal case, can present any. uh, by way of rebuttal testimony, rebuttal case can present anything uh, they would like certainly that's relevant to the proofs that are required for approval of the application uh, in response. And certainly, Mr. Chairman, to the extent they present any additional uh, evidence or information, the public would have an opportunity to question them and provide, you know, additional information as well.
So, okay, so does that mean I can't?
They're long-winded way of me saying, yes, you can speak.
Okay, so I agree with Lisa a thousand percent in that Lisa Romano, in that not having a pool is not a hardship. I can't come before you and say it is a hardship. I am blessed and lucky to be living the life I live. I am thrilled to live in the house that I have. I love this house. I want to stay here. If I don't have a pool, I will survive. I would love one. Okay, that said, two years, two years ago, um, I'm sure you're all aware of the controversy on the street. I, I was not alone. There were however many houses there on, on, are on the street. I think there was 80% of us who had gotten an attorney because we didn't want the whole neighborhood rezoned out of fear of overdevelopment for the street. The Romanos have a beautiful lot of land that they had wanted to subdivide and that wasn't allowed. So I would, I will never fight a variance unless somebody's trying to build something on my piece of property. I don't care what anybody does on their property. If the Romanos were lucky enough to have gotten the variance to build the second house, I would have been all for it. It wouldn't have affected me at all. But I think that Ms. Romano, I think that the reason she was so upset is that I, I don't even, I, I understand because when you don't get what you want, you see somebody else trying, you sort of feel slighted and I guess that that's the case. I apologize. But I know nobody on the board. I've never been friends with anybody on the board. The only person, I'm sorry, I'm so nervous about this. The only person who was ever on the board that I know is, is Mary McNett, who lives on Park Circle, who was my former next door neighbor and now my neighbor on the street. Um, and she recused herself when we went for the variance last time. Um, so, and if there were variances pulled for the previous owners, I have no knowledge of that. I, I don't. We've taken the proper channels with anything we've wanted to do with the house. I, I understand, like, had we rezoned, I'd be able to put in a pool. So it's almost to my detriment that we didn't go ahead and feel comfortable with the whole neighborhood rezoned to R6 and I still stand by that decision. I would still rather go for a variance, my property and risk not getting it than changing we, we call this, it's like a gem of a neighborhood. It's the most beautiful, charming street. I, I, I mentioned it before that our first house was Levin Park Circle. I spent like 15 years dying to get back onto the street. I bought this house basically without my husband even seeing it. I said, there's a house coming on the market and I have to go back and live there. So that's how strongly I feel about this neighborhood. So I don't want anybody to think that it was a personal vendetta against Miss, the Romanos, um, or any, and for the record, they are moving. So her, her, and they have a pool. So I'm sorry. So it, I just feel, I feel so badly that it seemed like such a personal attack to me about something that was really a neighborhood decision. We all felt very uncomfortable by, by what we were taught. I'm so upset by, by that sort of, not a personal attack. I'm very thick skinned. I don't mean it like that. I'm just, I'm so upset that that sort of is playing a role in this. Anyway, that said, um,
All right. Yeah, we're, we're getting off track here. So we'll just, let's just keep moving forward. Okay, um, but like I said, we've closed the public portion of, of the hearing um, now. So board members, do you have any comments regarding this application?
And, and just so we're clear, uh, Ms. Prasker's comments really, really didn't go to the, the evidence that's before the board for approval, denial of the application. And that is why there's no reason to open up the, uh, the, the public portion again. Thank you.
True. Thank you. Joe?
Let me just be clear about this. I think there was one objector who uh, indicated that he would be willing to, if I understood what he said, he would be willing to have an expert come to talk to the board about whether or not this pool would exacerbate the situation for the houses that lie at the bottom of the hill. And I want to hear that testimony. I want to hear that expert. I'm not prepared to vote on this.
Okay. So, so I'll, I'll, let me defer to, to Rob and/or Eileen in this case. Um, we heard a lot of testimony or actually not really testimony as much as we heard opinion regarding water flow and dynamics of, of lot drainage. Uh, where does that purview fall under this board? I mean, as far as in tonight, we're discussing lot coverage and maximum accessory coverage. But to what end does water infiltration on property have anything to do with this?
It really, I mean, Martha and Christine will review the application, review everything that comes to where they look at how much new land is being disturbed, whether it's for a pool, a patio, a new addition, and based on that, they will go over the grading plan with a fine tooth comb to make sure that what they feel needs to be captured is being captured. Um, I, I that's typically the way it is handled. Mr. Simon?
So when it comes to issues such as lock coverage and you actually heard it, if you want to call it an admission or otherwise for Mr. Anello, but I think he's right that when he was describing the benefits outweighing the detriments, um, he specifically stated that a benefit of this project is the enhanced stormwater management facilities for this property. And I do believe that for purposes of a lot coverage variance, uh, that certainly those issues are relevant uh, for the board's consideration. Uh, should they be raised in the context of the hearing? Sometimes they're not raised and sometimes just the question of, you know, do we want to see too much macadam in a front yard or not? But here we're talking about um, stormwater management and the applicant, I think to, to their credit uh, provided um, extensive information to the board by way of their engineering plans to demonstrate uh, in their opinion, that uh, any additional increase that is beyond what is permitted in the township ordinance will be effectively mitigated by additional stormwater management techniques, whether there are inlets, whether there, where there's additional dry well, uh, questions were asked about um, maintenance uh, of those, of those dry wells and the ability to do that. So I, I do think that the, the issue itself um, is relevant to the board's consideration in this, in this particular case. Um, and I think that the fact that, uh, there are neighbors that raised, you know, existing condition issues that, that are that they believe, even though it's not expert testimony, um, you know, causing water runoff. You know, it's, it's in essence in the case. What the board wants to do with it is up to the board. Uh, but they are certainly relevant issues for the board's consideration.
So, but we haven't heard any expert testimony. Uh, is there an expert that the board can consult?
Well, certainly, um, even though the township engineer typically uh, doesn't sit in on these applications. Um, you know, the board's entitled to, to uh, actually ask for um, any township professional uh, to review an application, uh, you know, to, to consider whether the proposal i- is appropriate or inappropriate, going to the relevancy of the variance, you know, for which relief is requested.
Rob, sorry, just also, I just be really clear. This, this is a C1 hardship variance, right?
Well, not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
No, this is more of a C2.
Well, that's what I want to understand. Is this, is this a C2?
Well, it's, well, right now it's an undersized, it's an undersized lot in the zone. So I think part of the argument, I believe that has been made by the applicants is that it qualifies as in part a C1 because it's, it's an undersized lot. And then part as, as the chairman stated, as a C2, uh, proofs that have been alleged that the benefits outweigh the detriment specifically because of the enhanced stormwater management facilities for the property.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
But Rob, my concern is with this board opining on stormwater management when the only thing we can take is what's been presented in front of us.
That's absolutely correct. The, the board is obligated to only consider the evidence that is presented uh, by the applicant and members of the public. And in this case, the applicant um, presented a professional engineer that provided plans and testimony uh, in support of those stormwater management facilities. And there's uh, nothing that was wrong with the notice that was provided. It was provided 10 days as uh, prior to the hearing as required by the municipal land use law. Uh, and there's an opportunity for um, members of the public certainly to retain experts to present an objector testimony or interested party testimony uh, of a professional nature, where they would be qualified, those experts would be uh, so qualified and present, you know, counter testimony if it was appropriate.
Um, so the best that we can rely on is going forward from here is that if however we file, find on these two variances, the township engineer uh, would have to take it to that end.
Well, certainly the um, any approval of any application is conditioned on any applicant also complying with the other requirements of the municipality, uh, which would include getting a grading permit and complying with any stormwater management uh, requirements that are set forth in the ordinance uh, as interpreted by the, the township professionals. Correct.
Joe, your question or comment?
As I have, I'm going to disagree respectfully with Mr. Simon. In this case, we've had one witness from the public who's asked in effect for the opportunity to retain a, an expert to de- determine whether or not he has a problem, whether there will be a problem. Uh, if we were to grant this variance. And I think it's important for this board to give that uh, member of the public the opportunity to retain uh, an expert to testify before this board. The expert may decide that the applicant is correct and may, may determine that he or she would not testify to the contrary before this board. But I think it's important for the board to give that uh, member of the public an opportunity to retain uh, the expert. So I'm not prepared for myself to vote on this issue until I hear both sides of the story.
Joe, I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying that this board, is it equipped to listen to testimony regarding water? Um, and that's something that I would defer to our engineer. So, I mean, I think we've been down this road, but Wolfgang, go ahead.
A question, just so I understand how it works. Wait, so the township engineer is going to see this plan, is gonna, is gonna have to approve it. If there is an issue, if there is indeed a stormwater runoff issue, then the township engineer will raise that and the applicant will, despite having the variance granted, will have to deal with it in some way so as to mitigate that, that issue.
Yes, before they get a permit. They'll have, she'll have to be satisfied with it. Yeah.
So, to, just to put a finer point on what Joe was talking about, the objector has actually stated under oath that they would have had expert testimony, but from their position, they didn't have enough time to get an expert in place and then, in fact, they have an expert who was coming, I believe the testimony was coming like this week. So we're in a position where we maybe, do we need to give the objector the benefit of the doubt? That if they had more time, I mean, 10 days to get an engineer is kind of tight, frankly.
We, we, we know when it was sent out. When was the, when was the notice sent out?
March 10th.
March 10th, the notice was sent out. And is that in compliance with the law?
Yes.
I mean, you know, I mean, we can't, we can't-
We said we couldn't get an engineer in 10 days. I, I think that that, that's not, that, that sounds reasonable to me.
It's a tough timeframe, but that's, that's the rules.
So practically speaking, I don't know, but practically speaking, there's, there's ample grounds for an appeal here on, on part of the objector, right? If you don't allow them to-
Anyone can appeal anything. Just, there's no, there's no, you know, there's no rule on that.
And if we follow protocol, then what chance does that objection have? I mean, it's not the, there's nothing whimsical or capricious about I mean, however we decide, right?
Yeah, but I mean, like, we, we, we on this board, we consider things like um, blockage of sunlight, right? There's a new construction block sunlight hitting another person's household. In my mind, water, you know, water runoff and whether sunlight is being blocked or the view is being blocked. These are similar, you know, similar categories, you know?
It's really not. Because there, there is no, there is no one at town hall that's in charge of, you know, blocking light and trees and that type of, well, there's trees, but in this case, there is an engineering department that does need to be happy. We don't, we can't set the rules on engineering. We can't. That has to be cleared by the engineering department. They have to sign off on this. Even if we approve this, it does still need to go through engineering and be approved. So we can say we want 25 dry wells in the backyard. That's outside our purview. So Wolfgang, do you have anything else on this?
No, I think that's an interesting point. What you're saying is that even if we were to, even if we were to hypothetically approve with some sort of a stipulation, on what basis are we making some sort of a stipulation that's not our?
Well, we, we, we could make it on the testimony of an objector engineer.
Yeah, just, just so we're clear about something. That, that the, the difference here is that when the applicant goes for a grading permit, that is not typically vetted, you know, before the public where is a variance application where the applicant has an obligation, the burden of proof to meet the positive and negative criteria. Obviously, we're here before the public. It's vetted before the public. So there is a, there is a bit of a difference and certainly the board is oblig, is not obligated as much as it has the right to um, by way of conditions um, impose them on any uh, approval in an effort to, to mitigate any detrimental impacts that may be caused by the granting of a variance. So the point, the point being is that the board, I believe, um, would be would, would be within its power either way to either say, hey, look, you had your chance, notice was completely proper. Uh, we can, we can take a vote on this or somebody can make a motion. Or the board could also decide that they want to hear more information by way of potentially contrary uh, engineering testimony to what Mr. Anello uh, has provided. The board is empowered uh, to do to do both. And I think that whichever way the board would, would go uh, would be within its uh, rights to do so.
My concern, Rob, with that is right now we're talking about an existing condition. Okay, there's little we can do about an existing condition, this runoff and everything that everyone's talking about. Um, the, the testimony would have to be limited to the conditions that this would either exacerbate or diminish based on development. And right now, everyone is talking about the current situation. But I, I'm suffering to hear what will happen other than Mr. Nello's testimony as to putting a pool in that makes this worse. And it means that we give time for a um, an objector to find a professional to furnish that. Then it comes to a time to, who do you defer? Whoever had the best story? Or is it eventually where it has to go to the pound township engineer who's probably more qualified than most of us to make the determination as to whether or not the drainage plan is sufficient and if it is detrimental to the neighbors.
So even if there is, even if we, even if we were to hear uh, testimony from a, from a professional, what bearing does that have? testimony from, from a professional, what bearing does that have on what the township engineer ultimately determines?
Right. So that's sort of my question. Where, at what point does the, the best argument win? Is that kind of how it works?
Well, it's, as you know, the board has the right to accept or reject expert testimony. And sometimes the board determines which expert is more credible than the other expert. That's part of the board's obligation in, in reviewing, you know, an application for a variance before it. And certainly what the, the township, all this board does is review variance applications. Positive and negative criteria, C1 and C2 in this case. And it's up to the board to determine whether it believes it has enough information to rule on the application or whether it wants to give an opportunity for a member of the public that says that he hasn't, you know, an engineer to come back. That's what we're up to.
All right. So I want to, I want to just wrap this up. So, so here's the situation. I will ask the board here, okay? And I think we're going on a slippery slope here. Okay. But I will ask the board, who would like to hear testimony from an objector's engineer regarding stormwater management and how it pertains to a pool and patio being installed in the backyard? Because I don't, I, the, the problem is we're dealing with an existing situation.
A different comment though. Sorry. We, we're talking about a situation where there's a deck, a patio and a pool that's covering the lot. I, I thought it to be, and I feel conflicted frankly about the negative criterion, whether this is, is an issue or not. But I, I, I thought we could also hear from our own town engineer. Is that not the case? Or do we think that's, I mean, I would find that relevant personally, I think.
No, the, the public portion is closed.
Oh, me? Even me?
So Eileen, you know, go ahead, Joe.
I just have one more thing to say. We have before us a request, two requests, and they're not insignificant. One is for maximum lot coverage. And they're talking about they're requesting where 35% is permitted. They're requesting over 40%, almost 41% of coverage. Secondly, the second thing they're asking for is maximum accessory coverage. And again, we're talking about a significant departure from the there, from the statute. They're talking about a proposed 26.4. Four, I guess that's a four.
Yeah, it's 26% deviation. Yeah, you're right.
26% four, point four maximum accessory coverage versus 20% that is the maximum permitted by the statute. And one of the objectives has said that he is, two of them have said they're very concerned with that these deviations would result in negative effects on their property. And one of them has said that he has an engineer coming out to the property this next week. And I understood from him that he was prepared to have that person come before this board to testify. One of the things that the, one of the reasons why there are maximum accessory coverage standards and maximum lot coverage standards is to prevent runoff on, of water onto adjacent properties. I think it's perfectly responsible for this board to listen to the testimony that has been proffered and to make a decision based on what we think is appropriate. Not leave it to the township engineer to issue or not to issue a permit. We have the right to either impose on any applicant the maximums that the statute has set forth for a lot coverage and accessory coverage or not grant that relief. And one of the reasons that we would have for not granting the relief is if we believe the testimony of an objector, an objectors expert. Now, we're assuming that the objectors expert would disagree with Mr. Or am I saying that right, O'Nella? And it is entirely possible that the expert would, would agree that this proposal to, to deviate from the standards would not negatively affect adjoining property owners. But I think we've got the obligation to hear that testimony and to make a determination based on that testimony.
Does anyone have any comments regarding the variances that are in front of us regarding the actual lot coverage variance and the accessory coverage variance? Because we're getting caught up in the water issue, but we're not discussing the variances that are in front of us. Joe addressed those in his concerns regarding the percentages and so forth. Does anyone have any testimony on that rather than getting involved in water issues?
My answer to that would be that one is intricately involved
The other.
In the, in the determination of the other.
No, I think, I think Joe makes a very good point. I mean, they are very intertwined. I mean, they are, they are not unrelated, you know, for sure. But if, again, with respect to hearing another professional, if we were to, if the board, if this board were to hear or to consider another professional's testimony that would really be truly relevant down the road, it would seem to be that it would be that of the township engineer. Because that's no matter what any other professional says, that's where it's going to come down anyways.
Do you want me to open this meeting to the public?
I move.
Anyone a second? Will it be a second? Anyone want to second the motion?
Guess not.
I guess not. So we're not going to open it back up to the public. Okay.
But did, is anyone?
My, 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 my gist of this is to bring Mr. Del Campo over and figure out where we're going here.
Yeah, I, I would, I would recommend, as Craig is saying, that, that somebody should potentially second his motion to reopen it to the public. Please.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Can we get Mr. Del Campo over here, please?
Also, Mr. Simon, this is Angelo No speaking. I didn't really get to have any rebuttal statements before it was turned over to discussion of the board. After Mr. Del Campo, I'd like about 30 seconds to 60 seconds of your time to do so.
Sure.
Thank you.
And me, sorry.
As long as it pertains to this, because I'm not getting involved in more and more conversation in this thing.
Specifically to this. I'd like to point a few things out, but after Mr. Del Campo's talk.
I'm on now.
Mr. Del Campo, you made the assertion that you can get a professional. When's the next time we can potentially hear this case if it's decided to be carried, Eileen?
Mr. Chairman, while, while, while Eileen is checking on that, you might want to ask Mr. Del Campo, just because I'm going through my notes that I didn't see it, as to whether the engineer that he connect, he contacted actually had an opportunity to review Mr. Anello's engineering plans. Regardless of whether he actually went to the site or not.
So Mr. Del Campo, you heard the questions. You need to rephrase it or do you understand the question?
No, I understand the question.
Okay. Have you actually had someone look at this yet?
They've been forwarded. If I told you that there's been an opportunity on the part of the engineer to look at it, I, I know for certain he has not come out to the site. But I have forwarded him those doc, forward those documents to him.
So Eileen runs, that's the deal, the date.
It's available is April 18. This is the Kite Center.
I think this should only take a few minutes. So that's what we're talking about, Mr. Del Campo. So if you will bring forth a engineer that will discuss only the variances that are currently being asked for and how they affect the water mitigation of this property, that's what we want to hear. It has to stay real tight.
That's, I think that's the whole purpose of his testimony, isn't it?
Okay. Well, I don't know, because I've heard a lot of stuff tonight about current conditions and not a lot about how this is going to actually exacerbate it. So that's what I want to hear. Mr. Nilo, you had a comment?
Yes, Mr. Pliner, and thank you for the opportunity of on, I don't need to share my screen again, but on drawing number two, which is the existing conditions base map plan, there's specific notes in there that additional notations have been made by yours truly, that's myself, that the existing conditions per my site visit of all of the pre-existing drainage patterns, where the problem areas were, where of any potential concerning areas where it's all marked on that plan in many locations. Furthermore, all the roof leader downspouts, I know I talked about that before, I mean, it was all marked, all the directions of where it goes. And as a direct benefit is to fix any broken pipes, clean any inlets, reconnect them as necessary and get them to the rear stormwater drywells. That will without a doubt mitigate stormwater runoff. That aside, doesn't matter what happens, and there's been some discussion about this, this project needs to go to the town engineer. And then who better to review this than the town engineer to either concur or disagree with the design that we present before them?
I wholeheartedly agree with your statement.
Thank you.
This is Prashkar. Your comment?
So my comment is again, addressing the fact that a, a lot of what the concern is of the existing conditions. So Mr. Del Campos to my left, I think we're pretty level. I don't know. I, I've never seen runoff, but whatever. But when Mr. Margolis had spoken, there's a drop off. Like, we're very high, so we've always been that high. We're not building the lot up to make us higher from that. And Mr. Margolis isn't actually behind me. It was the man who couldn't make it. So I just want to let you know that the existing conditions regarding the runoff and the drainage and the, maybe the flooding or water that goes down has existed since these houses were built.
Once again, we're not going to hear any testimony on that. We're going to hear testimony regarding the pool and how it affects the lot. On the patio. That's what it's going to be limited to.
Okay, I just.
So.
Can I ask, make one more suggestion?
Sure.
If, if Mr., so, so far we've heard that the neighbor has reached out to an engineer and provided the engineer with the plans, but we don't know what the engineer's position is with regard to the application or, or the plans that were submitted in support of it. And I think it's only fair to the board that Mr. Del Campo notify the board at least 10 days prior to the hearing if in fact he intends to have an engineer provide professional testimony with regard to the application, because it could very well be that the engineer reviews the plans and says, I don't have any real comments. This seems to be designed properly.
And also I'd expect those plans to be given to Mr. Nello ahead of time for review. As I don't want to create a situation here where we're going to go back and forth all night with, I disagree.
Yeah, my, my guess is that any engineer that Mr. Del Campo retains is not going to be redesigning this project, but rather, you know, at best providing comments as to the proposed stormwater management design.
And if I may add, is it possible to get feedback from the township engineer as well and on the plan? Before the next hearing?
I, I mean, that, that's, that's my question. Is, isn't it, would it be a better use of the board's time to simply hear testimony from the township engineer?
We could certainly request that.
I mean, on occasion, we, we've had the, the township engineer provide written comments to the board with regard to some applications, correct?
Yes, we have done that. And I think, and even testimony from another professional, from a judge's professional, I don't understand how that ultimately makes the decision. I mean, I understand the sentiment to want it, but the most effective, it seems to me that the most effective way to pursue this is to have the final decider actually weigh in at this juncture as to as to how he or she feels about the situation, about the, about these plans and the potential impact on, on water runoff.
A letter from the township engineer would certainly satisfy me.
Yep, I agree.
Yeah, me as well.
Eileen, can we get Martha's opinion?
Christine, yeah.
Sorry, Christine, sorry.
Yeah. I'm sure between the two of them, I could get a report. Or, you know, have them look at, I mean, they'll look at what Mr. Nello has submitted to us. They might say it's not, it's not big enough, or they're, they're just going to look at what's being proposed and is what he's proposing adequate mitigation for what he's disturbing. That's really all they would be able to do, which is I think all you need to do.
But I also want to remind the board, we do have two variances here that need to be decided on. Regardless, regardless of, regardless of the water situation, it still needs to be determined whether or not the backyard can accommodate dismassing in terms of coverage and accessory coverage. So please don't forget that we do have to also adjudicate on that. So Joe?
My, my suggestion would be that if, if Mr. Del Campo, Mr. Del Campo's expert concludes that there is really no objection to the proposal and that it will not affect the neighboring properties and makes the bad situation worse. That the township engineer is entitled to see that report or is entitled to see a negative report if indeed Mr. Mr. Del Campo's expert comes up with a negative report. In other words, I think the township engineer is entitled to see both.
Very well. I would also like to know the township engineer's opinion. So if that's the case, they can take a look at it, but I also would like to hear our township engineer's point of view. So.
I mean, one more thing, and Craig, just to kind of reiterate, I think what you're saying here is that this water, the stormwater issue aside, even if the township engineer were to come across, come along and say, yes, it's actually gorgeous and actually is, was wonderful. It improves the whole water runoff for the whole neighborhood. This could still be, we could still deny this based on.
Wolfgang, you're, you're spot on. That's why I want to hear comments regarding the variance requested. Regardless of the outcome of this water. But no one wanted to do that. So Joe sort of alluded to the fact that he's concerned about the overall size of the deviations. So there's an opinion there regarding the variances. My concern is that we're going to go through all this and since no one has voiced their opinion tonight on the actual variances being requested, forgetting what, this could be the most wonderful thing for water mitigation in that whole area. But we still haven't discussed.
That's true.
The variances. So I'd like now to close the public portion of the meeting. Okay, so we'll move Mr. Del Campo over in a second. So no further comment from the applicant or the objectors. So no further comment from the applicant or the objectors or the applicant's professionals, so. One more time, does anyone have any opinion on the current, knowing what you know right now, on the current variances sought?
I would actually echo Joe's sentiments that it is, these do seem to be substantial deviations from. You know, these are, this is a substantial request, and I'm. I'm on the fence, I was, I'm on the fence, you know, I'm kind of torn whether this is too much massing or not, I mean, it's, it gets very subjective at this point. Uh, the patio, the patio itself seems very large. Uh, the pool itself does not seem so large, but the patio, the patio, the pool patio does seem large, and that is a, that is definitely a concern.
Thank you, anyone else have any comment regarding the application? Go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead, Amy.
From, I, I, I've just, I think I, I feel the same way as Wolfgang that these do seem like very large variances. And I guess what I was struggling with in the time, right, is, is the negative criteria and the impact on, you know. You know, the public good and whether it's meeting, like, I, I think I'm actually. I, I think probably I would feel even more strongly about these variances. In, in a negative way, i.e. I wouldn't accept them, except for the fact that it seems like in addition to what's being done. Is helping the water situation, so I guess if I think about it that way and I separate out the water situation. Uh, you know, and, and whatever mitigation is being done. Uh, I, I, I would, just looking at the variance itself, I, I don't feel. Given the size of it, inclined to approve it, I guess.
So, um, I'm actually in support of the application, water issue aside. You know, when I, when I visited the property, you know, I did the best I could to really vision where I think the pool will be. Um, it has no impact on the neighbors, in fact, they're very far away. It certainly has no impact on the neighbors to the right, because it's on the opposite side of the yard. Uh, and then, you know, right adjacent to the pool is the, is Mr. Del Campo's garage, right, this garage is right there. So, and then he has a pool, right, on the other side of the garage. So I don't see where, yeah, and it's a very thoughtful design, you know, I, I agree, I think it's a beautiful house, you look at the rear, the design, the deck, it's all very, very lovely. I thought the placement of the pool was also thoughtful because it does preserve a portion, you know, a meaningful sort of portion of the backyard, if they had turned the pool. The other way, then you would have basically lost the backyard completely, so, so the applicant, right, is, is, I won't use the word sacrificing, but the applicant is taking into consideration the placement of the pool. It's not ideal as the pool owner to have it in that location, right, if you own the pool, you maybe rather have it, you know. Oriented differently in the backyard, but that, they considered that and kind of tucked it away in a corner next to a garage. No, I don't see how it has any negative impact on anyone, uh, any of the neighbors, it's a thoughtful design and, and, and it preserves a meaningful portion of the backyard, so. Water issue aside, which is very significant, very material to me, I do want to hear the engineer or some, some additional evidence on that. I'm actually in support of the application.
Judy, do you have any comment?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm also torn between the, the two point of views here, but I think that testimony from the township. Engineer would really help me decide. The pros and cons of, of this, it's not a very ideal situation, given that it's a sloppy backyard and putting a pool there is not an ideal situation. Uh, but, but yeah, I would really weigh in those, that, that comment from the township engineer in my decision.
Um, I'm not in favor of this application. I think that this lot is thoroughly developed as it currently stands. And to put a pool and more patio in this backyard, I think is just overdeveloping the lot. So regardless of comments come from any water mitigation, water person, whatever, engineer. I would not support the application. So. If we move this forward to. To listen to town engineer, what have you. Um, we all know where we stand right now.
Well, I don't think we heard from Joe.
No, Joe made it clear, Joe made this point clear, but go ahead, Joe, if you would like to reiterate.
Well, I, I would just say this. I think that the, the issue that was raised by the objectors. Is critical to whether or not. This application should be granted.
Okay.
That is to say, that is to say, I think that the water issue is part and parcel. Of what is being asked for here. And certainly if the objector, in my judgment at least. If the objector had come in and said. The same thing he said tonight. But the request had been for one half of one percent. Uh, variation on both of these. See, these, uh. Uh, variances. I probably would have taken a different position. But these are substantial deviations that are being sought here. And one of the reasons that we have been given by the applicant and the applicant's expert. Is that there are. Um. That, that the cranny of these variances would lead to mitigation of the water problem. If that is not so. And there's, there's an expert who would take a contrary position on that. It would be very meaningful to me. Because of the extent of the variances that are being sought.
Okay. I think we're going to slipper slope here, folks, but, uh, nineteenth, Eileen? You're muted.
It's actually the eighteen.
Eighteenth, okay. Uh, this case will be continued on April eighteenth, no further notice required. Uh, Mr. Del Campo will be able to furnish a engineer, and we will listen to that testimony.
And, and, and if Mr. Del Campo is not intending to present professional engineering testimony with regard to this application. He should so advise the board at least 10 days prior to that hearing day.
Thank you, Rob. Thank you for your time this evening, we will see you on the eighteenth.
Thank you.
Nigel.
Wait, no. Don't leave.
No, no, we still have to bring back.
Mr. Classy.
Mr. Classy. And Mr. and Mrs. Bauer.
All right.
Hi, everybody.
Hello, Tim.
Hi, I have all the answers. We've decided that we can cut the building down so that there is no FAR. And I've also modified the left side setback to make it two feet. Less of a deviation and deleted the second floor setback. And I'd like to. Share my screen if I could. I'll go through it kind of quickly for you, because I know it's sort of getting late. But we had a lot of time to go over it, so I guess thanks for giving us. The time. And I sent this to Eileen and she reviewed it with me also. So this is my revised attachment E.
Wait, wait, hold, hold, hold.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So. Why don't we mark your revised attachment E as a three?
Okay. Now, what I did is, the existing, I'm going to go to the first variance for first floor setback. Um, the existing is nineteen point three, the proposed now is nine point three three in that back corner where it was seven point three three before. Um, the ordinance requires fifteen, so that would be a deviation of five point six seven feet.
And you're actually bringing that back wall closer to the chimney, correct, is that what you're doing?
Yes.
Are you eliminating, you're eliminating those front doors?
Twelve foot six wide, I pulled it into ten foot six, because that was what we thought was the minimum. That we could still have a usable room, because remember there's a chimney that's actually even projecting into that room.
Right, so you're still twenty-two feet long, just ten foot six wide?
Yes.
Okay.
Then I deleted the second variance because we pulled the building into such a point. That the, that we would conform to the twenty-two foot. Up at the second floor, and I can share that with the board again if you would like me to.
Good.
And then, and then finally. So we deleted that variance, and then.
Deleted, you don't really need to show it.
The side combined variance actually got better by two feet. Because of the two feet that I pulled in the first floor. So those numbers are the actual. Um, side combined, we were asking now for a variance of four point seven feet or four percent. I mean, this is the side combined, it's a little exaggerated because of this rounded lot. Uh, where are, my front yard width for this calculation is really a hundred and twenty feet. If my, if my lot was a hundred feet wide. You know, it would be thirty-five, I would be conforming at the thirty-seven point three. It's really a problem related to the, just to make this easy, I'm going to do the pie, the lot. I, I could take you to the plans again if you would like.
Yeah.
So, well, we're asking now for two variances and we've improved them both. And we deleted the third one, is what I'm saying. And if I go back to my BOA sheets, which we'll update, you know. What we really did here is we just. All I did was, I. Cut two feet right off of the building. So that the seven point three three now would be nine point three three. And this, when I calculated this before, from the front corner of the addition to the property line, I had thirteen feet. That would now be fifteen feet, right, on the perpendicular to the property line. Whereas this would be nine point three three, and then this dimension of the fifteen would now be, let's say, seventeen feet. Then on the second floor. Where I had a. Oops, sorry. You know, I had a very small variance for the second floor. But I picked up a lot of FAR on the second floor. So what I had to do was to pull the building in so that I could delete the FAR, and as part of pulling that building in. I, um, conform to the twenty-two feet, so that's why I'm saying that that variance is eliminated as part of this.
So, so no FAR, no second floor setback, so no FAR and no second floor setback, correct?
No, that's correct.
Okay.
And the attachment that. My A three is an accurate depiction of the. Variances that we're requesting tonight. I gotta just go back to it. That's really where we are, right, it, it had the effect of improving both of the variances. The, both of these requests by two feet in the elimination of the second floor variance.
And, and Mr. Classy, you would agree. Um, that if this board were to grant approval, that as a condition of approval, that you would submit revised plans to the board. Demonstrating the, uh, change in the plan that is eliminating the FAR and the second floor setback variance, correct?
Yes, yes.
Any board members have questions for Mr. Classy?
I do.
Go ahead, Joe.
Mr. Classy, I take it that your clients would be prepared. To agree to leave those trees where they are.
Yes, yes. The trees on the left property line, yes.
Yes.
Those trees.
Thank you.
And, and any of them died to replace them, my client is concerned about. As concerned about those trees as the board is.
Mm-hmm.
Really. Discussing these tree, the trees running on the left side of the property line.
That's correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Can you just stop your answering quick, just want to see if there's anyone in the audience? Anyone in the audience have any questions regarding this application? Uh, anyone in the audience have any comments regarding this application? And in that case, I will close the public portion of the meeting. Um, board members, what say you? Go ahead, Wolfgang.
So especially with these changes, I had, I was a little skeptical at, at first with respect, especially to the. Toward the front of the house where the seven point three three, uh, side yard setback was, was located. Uh, with this change and with the removal of the FAR. Variance, actually, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with this, I think it's a, I think it's a nice design, I think it's going to be a great addition, you know, to the house, I think, I don't, I don't see any detriment whatsoever. To the neighbors or to the neighborhood.
Yeah, I agree with Wolfgang, I was really struggling with the first floor variances for the variance he cited, but now I'm, I'm actually comfortable with the application.
Thank you, Steve, uh, any other comments?
I would agree. With the two comments that have just been made.
I would as well, so with that, do I have a, uh, motion in this case?
Move approval.
Do I have a second?
Second, second.
Thank you, Joe. Eileen?
Amy Lawrence?
You're muted.
Yes.
Jodi Sharma?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus?
Yes.
Craig Plainer?
Yes. Good luck with the project.
Thank you very much.
Much pleasure. Thanks for letting us carry.
Sure. Um, are there any other comments from the audience on anything that's not on the agenda this evening? I see none. Well, in that case, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh, we got lots of that, so Wolfgang on the, uh, motion and Steve on the second. Thank you so much, folks, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Greg.
Take care.
Night.
Good night.